Good evening. Welcome to our February 15, 2022 City Council Meeting. It is...
Ladies and gentlemen, we have some peace and quiet here. We've got some student government leaders here with us today. So if we could have everyone's attention so they could get the full experience, we'll proceed. Thank you.
It is currently 7:04 PM. Meeting is now in session. Now everyone please rise. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Kelly Dupey from Faith Community Church, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the privilege of living and working in the great city of West Covina. And Lord, tonight, God, we ask your presence to be with our city council, Lord, as they debate, as they decide, as they deliberate, as they discuss the issues that are facing our city. Father, we also lift up everyone that is out serving us tonight. Lord, in our police and fire departments, God, we pray that you would protect those men and women, God, that you would watch over them and bless them, Lord, with both safety as well as success in their mission to do your work in our community. Thank you, God, for what you want to do here tonight, Lord, and how you want to lead the council, God, so that your will would be done here in our city. And we ask you to bless this meeting now, in Jesus' name, amen.
All right, please place your attention towards the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Tabata Bar?
Present.
Councilman Wu?
Present.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Present.
Mayor Castellanos?
Present.
City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Presentation by Dr. Flores of the West Covina Unified School District Superintendent.
She's here? Okay. So we'll give her a moment to join us up here, and then we will join her at the microphone. Yeah, you know, good, good idea. How about, we'll get started with you. Do you want to speak about your experience today?
Yeah. So today, we did go throughout the day learning about student government. It was a very good experience for me, and you know, I'm student government for my, for my school itself, and kind of just seeing how our city works and what we can do, and the things that are put in place so that our community is bettered and done for the people themselves really, really opened my eyes to what people do out here.
Who would like to go next? Go ahead.
So today, I got to act as a council member. We got to see all the different departments that go into making decisions that affect us every day in our city, in our community, the community members. I'm happy to say that I learned very much today, and I had an amazing experience. I got to meet many great people that I know that I can go to and I can trust to make good decisions for all of us. Thank you.
I had a great time today at Student Government Day. I learned more about all the departments and what they do for our community, and I learned what they, what their ideas are for our community and how they want to reshape our community for the future.
I shadowed a city council member today, and I was able to take an insider look on the debate and discussion that take place behind the scenes before saying yes to your proposal. And I'm so happy to be able to participate in this live model of our city government, you know, to see what we learn in a classroom setting in person, and I just had so much fun.
Yeah, I wanted to follow that by saying I'm also in our students, our school's student government, and previously I was treasurer. So it was really interesting to see the financial side of that because I'm interested in economics, finance, environmental economics. And it was, they took us on a tour around, and seeing the finance department was really interesting, as well as how all the other departments work with each other. And just learning overall about local government was really eye-opening, and that we could all make a change.
Thank you guys for sharing that. Would any of our other students like to share? City Manager, please.
Hello, my name is Paulina. I'm from Russia, and thank you for the opportunity to see how American government works. It was a great experience for me, and now I know how different governments can be in our world. Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anybody else like to share?
Hi, my name is Genevieve. I had the privilege today to shadow the Assistant City Manager, and I got to see how much work they do, and it's more like behind the scenes. And obviously, as a high school student and leadership myself, it was, it was awesome to see how much, like, they work together and how much communication falls into it. And I think I definitely learned a lot, as well as my other peers who are here with me today. So thank you guys for this opportunity.
Go ahead.
Learning about city government today and all of its counterparts, the council and all the departments, it definitely was really interesting to see because everyone has different jobs, but without everybody, we couldn't be a well-functioning and efficient city.
Thank you. Yeah, a question or comment? Go ahead.
I'm Natalia Lima, and today I really got the chance to shadow the City Manager and see how all the groups interact together to work together as a team to decipher between what, what the city of West Covina needs, and we got to do mock trials and stuff. And so today was an overall really fun day for me, and I really got to see how the politics work within my city and how things end up becoming the way they do.
Thank you for all your comments. Did we miss anyone? No? Okay, good. Looks like... Yeah, I think right now is a good time to have one of our community leaders, Brad Manning. If you would please come to the microphone and explain a little bit more about the history and everything that goes on on days like today, please.
Mr. Mayors, council members, staff, and community. My name is Brad Manning. I'm with the West Covina Kiwanis Club. And I apologize for turning my back on you guys. But this is this eighth year that we have done the Student Government Day, partnership between our city and our local high schools. We bring, oh, thank you, leadership. Is it on? Can you hear me? And it's a partnership between our community and the, and the city here and the school district to bring kids in here, job shadow, learn a little bit about student government, have them give suggestions and things how we could improve our city. And we have a chalkboard or a whiteboard out there filled with 14 things that they would like to see changed in the city or improved. Then they came in and did a mock city council meeting in which they took the positions they are currently in. All of the kids over here to this side, the students, were the department chairs within the city, and they got up and said, "This is how I would like you to spend mythical, a mythical million dollars. You have a million dollars to spend on one-time money? Where does it go?" They had department chairs come up and fight for ambulance services and body camps and playgrounds and flowers and infrastructure within the technology area in here, where the clerks, the finance, and human resources. And I think it was half a dozen more. And all of those were given a price tag, and they had a million dollars, and they had to kind of decide who gets everything they want, who gets part of what they want. In eight years, we have never, ever been able to give away a million dollars. This is the first year these kids not only heard what the departments were saying, they put it in, in terms where they understood it, they asked probing questions. Our department chairs, representing the departments here, gave excellent, excellent answers with examples, and they made up their own terms sometimes just to be creative. But they were able to make that decision in about 35 to 40 minutes, and it's taken an hour and a half in most other cases. I was very proud of them. I told them afterwards, they were the first ones ever, and I thought they were great. This is a project dear to my heart, been very involved on the outside looking in in city government, and I love the fact that kids are learning about it so that they can be the representatives in the stands, just like you are, and they can become involved in their community. Like I said, I'm with the West Covina Kiwanis Club, and we are so proud to put this on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. We really appreciate that and everything you do for the community. For the time being, we're going to swap some of our presentations.
The West Covina Firefighters Association, West Covina Fire Management Association, and the West Covina Fire Department have partnered with the California Fire Foundation to provide emotional and financial assistance to our families and communities displaced by fires. I too invite our fire chief to the front to talk about the SAVE program.
Good evening, council, citizens and staff. First off, I'd like to say this is Nicholas and Angela from South Hills and West Covina Unified School District, oh, yes, High School. I'd like to say off-script real quick that they were able to get most of the million dollars for the fire department. They did a great job, and that was great. So I thank them for that. So we're going to talk about the SAVE program.
Hello, everyone. Hope you guys are doing well. And we have recently partnered up with local unions, and we have introduced this new program called the SAVE program. We've essentially, we're supplying aid for victims for emergencies.
Yeah, so SAVE program stands for Supplying Aid to Victims of Emergency. It gives $250 for victims of residents with at least 20% property damage. The whole family and the residents that was damaged gets $250. It's not, it's not for each person. And if more than one family occupies one residence, then only one family gets it. So the family gets the, gets the money by the fire department giving the card to the union, and then the union activates the $250 card, and then the union gives it to the family. The $250 is not that much, but it can be very helpful for basic supplies like food. Oh, yeah, that's it.
Let's give Nicholas and Angela a round of applause. They learned about the fire department and the SAVE program and our needs and how we work in 20 minutes. They did a great job. So what we want to do this evening, we wanted to just bring to the council and citizens to a great program that the professional fire, California Professional Firefighters has partnered up with the local union, the firefighter management, firefighters union and firefighter management union, and in partnership with the fire department, they do the agreements and we manage it for them. And basically what it is, is we will respond to emergencies, and when there's 20% damage to a residence, like a fire, a flood, earthquake, trees down or something, at the time of the emergency, the incident commander will have credit cards. They're $250, and they can activate this, and we immediately give it to the family, and they can go get, if the whole house burned down, they might not have shoes or socks or t-shirts. They can go get that, or a hotel room, or to food, or until Red Cross can come in. Sometimes that takes time, sometimes it takes a day. So we just wanted to present this to the, to the community, let them know it's something that we're going to start doing, let the council know it's out there in case they start getting phone calls or, you know, things about it. Now it is, there is rules, it's very specific rules of who, what, and where can get it. Can't be businesses. If there's multiple families that occupy one resident, only one resident, only one occupant can get it. So it's a great program. It's a great program, and we're so glad to be part of it. So Terry's here from the Firefighter Association, might want to say some words.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me. So in this line of work, we kind of realized very quickly that a regular day for one family can quickly turn into the worst day of your life. And unfortunately, those first few hours or those first couple of days can be very challenging trying to get things in order, find somewhere to stay. Again, like the chief here and these young two ones said, getting, getting food, medications refilled, those things can be quite the hurdle, and especially factoring in stress and trying to wrap your head around what just happened. These cards might be able to provide some relief for families in that quick, immediate moment. Hopefully, we don't have to use a lot of them for everybody's sake, but anything that we can do to help the community in those moments of need, we'd love to be a part of.
Yeah, and again, just to reiterate, this is above and beyond what Red Cross would be able to provide. Anytime there's an incident in the city, we immediately call for Red Cross, get them coming so they can provide a place for lodging, get them some clothes, stuff like that, but also to help them through the process, and that's what we're here for as well. You know, you, nobody ever prepares to lose their house or their property, and you'd be amazed how lost you are in those moments when that happens. So this is just something, again, above the services we already provide with Red Cross and, you know, the advice that we can give them to try to help them through this process. This is just something above and beyond that we've able to partner up with IFF and get this resource out to them.
One last note on it is, is for at the time of an emergency. So I know somebody might have emergencies that take place, it doesn't interact the police or fire department, we don't come out. So it's not for somebody to call and say, "I had an emergency at my house and I need this." It's if we respond and we're there at the time of the emergency is when this would be utilized. And we thank you all for being here. Again, I thank Nicholas and Angela, they did a great job, and if there's nothing or no questions, I think that's it from us.
Thank you. I invite Dr. Flores to the front. Dr. Flores is the current West Covina Unified School District Superintendent and is here tonight to provide us with a presentation.
And we're all going to go down there and join you. Before we get started, would you like to say anything?
Well, I have quite a few words to say. First and foremost, I'm just so very proud of our students. What a wonderful opportunity. Thank you to City Council and to our partners for making this, bringing this opportunity to our, to the West Covina Unified School District. Our students are surely benefiting from this, learning what it takes to, to do these, these jobs and to start thinking big. They are going to be the future leaders, not only of this community, but of the world in some capacity, and we're just so thrilled to have them have this opportunity, this real-life opportunity, very innovative, outside-the-box thinking, and just excited to see them participate. So thank you to all of those who, who brought this opportunity to our community, to our students.
And introduce...
Good afternoon, Six High School in West Covina. Met today with the city staff and officials where they learned about daily operations in city government, discussed the needs of the community, and participated in a mock city council meeting where they debated where budget should be focused based on the city needs. I have to call the following students to the front. Margaret Wu, South Hills Academy.
Certificate, certificate, in order, yes. A, a green one and a blue one.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
Sure, and then you can line up here.
Paulina Soro du Quijina. Victoria Chun, South Hills Academy. Nicholas Swoboda, South Hills Academy. Natalia Lima, South Hills High School. Anthony Andino, South Hills High School. Alberto Guvera, West Covina High School. Genevieve Nocun, West Covina High School. Lena Niggin, West Covina High School. Angela Tambu Bolin, West Covina High School. Kristi Yu, West Covina High School. Angelina Martinez, Mount SAC Academy. Anissa Oza, Mount SAC Academy. Damian Savios, Mount SAC Academy. Melvin Hernandez, Mount SAC Academy.
And for our student mayor, Drake Casada, South Hills High School. Thank you, guys, and a round of applause for us all, but I'd like to invite our council up here, please. Let's stay up here, and I'd like to invite our council up here, and I want, let's take about half of our students and go on the other side and try to squeeze in for a photo, please. Yeah, let's, let's actually get everyone up here. Look at the camera. All right, thank you, everybody. Well, I think they're in here. All right, let's get everyone in this one. Look at John up top.
Student Government Day.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Test. Is that still on? Yeah.
I think so. I don't know if they have, if they're having a seat.
Sorry about that.
I go back then.
He's my boss.
Oh, you're welcome.
You're gonna be signed.
All right, let's go ahead and take a photo.
All right, Natalia. I think we're good.
Thank you so much.
My camera, I need to.
We'll see, maybe I'll. Oh, eat this one.
Nice to meet you. Oh, is that right?
I like that a lot.
Oh, okay. Oh, my God, what a small world. You're like, that's that lady.
You want a picture?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll take pictures. My kids. I'm here with my kids.
Mr. Flowers, come on. You're, you're a trustee.
Thank you very much. My, my family wants one, you know, they all came out here.
Yeah, we'll pretend we're singing or something.
Oh, Mr. Flowers, too, come in.
You know, I had to move my chair, too. For space.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you to all of our students for being here. We hope you had a very enjoyable and educational experience. We'll wait for, for the room to clear and then we'll have Dr. Flores tell us a little bit more about herself and we'll wait a few more seconds. Thank you, Dr. Flores, for, for the honor and for helping us with the certificates and for being here. Now, if you, if you wouldn't mind taking the floor and telling us a little bit about yourself and anything you'd like to share.
Sure. Well, thank you, Mayor. Before, um, saying a few things about myself and as well as what I aspire to be able to do in our great city of West Covina and leading the West Covina Unified School District, I want to recognize my board trustee, Mr. Flowers, for being here and always being so supportive of our students and our community, always being present at all events, it seems like it. So, and I also want to thank you once again for allowing our students to have such a wonderful opportunity to start thinking big, start thinking about leadership and start thinking about what would they do if they had the ability to sit in your seats, for example, and determine how to best use the funds that come to city, so. So, thank you. So, here I am as just started, let's see, I believe it's my sixth week as the superintendent for the West Covina Unified School District, and I'm just delighted to be here. It's been everything that I imagined it would be. And, but before talking about my experience, I do want to say a little, a little about myself. My husband is here in the audience. I'm a mother of three, uh, three girls, two young adults and a teenager. And I'm the proud daughter of hardworking immigrant parents who came to this country because this is where they were able to realize their American dream. And most importantly, I, I am of a true believer of God, country, and family. And it's those values and beliefs that bring me here in, yeah, at this point in my life in leading the West Covina Unified School District. Throughout my life, I've had different people who have provided the support and opportunities for me to realize my potential. And along the way, yes, there were teachers and different school, school workers, schools, wonderful people in my life, but there were also city people, so I'm very proud to be here. I remember different opportunities I had also as a, as a child in elementary and junior high and high school to be involved with some city activities. And so I recognize that in my own past, I've had those opportunities and it's so wonderful to see that our students also continue to have these opportunities here, obviously in a greater scale than I ever experienced, so thank you. What do I bring to West Covina Unified School District? Well, I'm here because I'm eager to contribute to a community that I believe is a great match for my skill set and also my values and belief. As I've met so many people within our community, I could tell you one thing. There are people here who are truly dedicated to our community and to serving, to service and people who dedicate their lives to giving back to the community. I've had opportunity to speak with different groups and we have so many people that are, for example, retired and who continue to contribute and are eager to collaborate with our school district. And so as superintendent, I'm very, I'm looking for opportunities to also partner with not only our, our teachers, our staff and our parents, but also our, our community at large. And because I believe that the only way that we can bring the best that we can to our students is really through collaboration and partnership. And so as I go out there, I'm meeting different folks and I'm just so delighted to see that this community is, has its arms open and is so ready and willing to serve children and that, that really warms my heart. My background and experience, like most superintendents, I've, I've worn all the hats, you know, from paraprofessional in the classroom to teacher, assistant principal, principal, director, assistant superintendent. My last opportunity was in San Jose at a small school district, actually a little bit larger than West Covina, so not that small. And, you know, leading through this pandemic has, has taught me many things. And there's, it's been a challenging time for all, especially our students, but what I've learned the most is that at no time in history have we've seen that the value of relationships is so key in building community and building partnership and in helping our, our students and our staffs because adults have also struggled through this time, know that they are cared for and that we are going to do everything to not only maximize their safety but also look after their social, emotional well-being. And so as, here we are in March, first day of March, and we hear from the state everything related to masks. And for me, as superintendent and working with our staff, I'm always thinking, how do we maximize our student's safety, the safety of our staff and community and ensure that, that our children are able to get back to the quote-unquote "normal," whatever that was, right? But I could tell you that if you walk into any of our schools, and I've been privileged to walk into all of our schools and see our classrooms, there's some dynamic things going on. We've got some very talented educators and support staff who are coming in every day and dedicating to ensuring that our children are able to, to have experiences that they had pre-pandemic. So I'm delighted and I hope that our city council members at some point, you know, will be able to visit some classrooms and see the wonderful things that are happening out there. For the future, what do I aspire? Why West Covina? Well, not only is it a wonderful community, but I could tell you from my district, when I was considering West Covina, I was just so impressed by the work that has been done by a previous superintendent and our school board in ensuring that we had a, have a fiscally sound school district, one that we have the infrastructure within each department to be able to sustain our district through the pandemic and beyond. We have some really good programs and I would say at times, some great programs. You've probably heard the quote that says, "Good is the enemy of great." I have a saying that goes, "Great is the enemy of outstanding." And so I'm not satisfied with good, I'm not satisfied with great. I'm seeking outstanding because I truly believe that our children need us in education and collaboration with our, our community leaders to work together to bring about outstanding opportunities for them. My last assignment as superintendent in the Bay Area and Silicon Valley taught me one thing and that is that we have so many jobs that are unfilled. I think part of that is that overall, our educational system has not changed a whole lot. It's based on a paradigm that is hundreds of years old. And so what I seek to do is work with my wonderful team and dreaming big and thinking about what are those global skills that our children need to be competitive at a global market, not just in West Covina, not just in California or the United States, but throughout the country and the world, throughout the world. And so with that in mind, I have great dreams for our, our school district. We've been having lots of discussions. My first month has been dedicated to learning about our school district so that I'm able to have a better assessment as to where we are and thinking about our different programs and opportunities and how do we take those to the next level so that we go to a place where we are outstanding and that we are working together to meet the individual needs of every single child. And so as I get out there, I do hope to meet all of you. I, I've met so many members of our community, actually have met most of you. And it's, I'm delighted to be part of this wonderful community and I'm looking forward to a continued partnership with you. And I'm just, just so happy to be here. So, thank you for allowing me to come before you and to share a few of my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Councilman Wu.
Uh, I just want to say, welcome to West Covina. And I, I met you last week at a meet and greet, okay, and at the Edgewood, okay, and the event center.
Yes.
Okay, and the first time we met, okay, you're nothing but very friendly and passionate, okay? You're passionate to serve, okay? And because West Covina Unified School District and the city council, we're serving the same population. We're serving the same resident and we basically serving our children, okay? And that's why we really want the kid that take our passion and doing the future. So that's something very important for them kind of building their mind, sitting over here, understand how to decide the city future, okay? And they have to have a passion, but I want to say this, okay? And I can tell you, you're going to do good, do great for our city school district. And I hope we can continue to have a net city and school district relationship because I think you heard about sometime the local government, the school districts, like not, not, they, they don't get along, but we want to get along. We want to work together, okay? And we, if we went to this, okay, and principal of the day, I was the Edgewood principal one, one day, okay? I hope you can continue to do that kind of thing, invite the council to over there to share our experience to our future leader, to let them understand sometime you have to come out to serve. No matter how difficult, have to come out, okay? And see, hopefully you can do great thing and for your community. But again, welcome and thank you so much. Come over here, spend time and make time for us and, okay, kind of tell everybody who you are, okay? And welcome again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we, yes, I'll be taking you up on, on your offer and I look forward to continuing to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the assistant city clerk. Any emails received by 5:00 PM have been posted to the city's website. All emails are part of the public record. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
I have ten speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, and go ahead and list them, please. Let them get started.
Our first speaker is Jerry Pachis, followed by Tanya Lamone, followed by Angie Gillingham.
Good evening. At the last council meeting, it was good to see the council actually listening to residents who were concerned about a cell tower installation. I agree that installation did not fit. The councilman's remarks that the cell tower would look ghetto concerns me. The word ghetto has a very specific connotation. An ugly cell tower does not make any neighbor, neighborhood, including the city's wealthier neighborhoods ghetto. An ugly cell tower is an eyesore. Traffic, parking, and street maintenance in a city's low and moderate income areas are prone to ghetto issues. Council reaction to resident concerns does seem inconsistent depending on the project location. This past October, for instance, when you approved the zone change for the Amazon Distribution Center, residents in zones adjacent to that area expressed concern about the traffic, parking, and street maintenance. Those resident concerns were dismissed and sarcastically ridiculed by some on the council. Ironically, the planning commission provided the council with recommendations that would have helped alleviate resident concerns. The council majority wouldn't even listen or discuss the planning commission's recommendations. One example, the commission's recommendation to prohibit off-site parking responded to resident concerns that warehouse people would take their street parking. Requiring onsite parking for employees didn't cost Amazon any money or require any operational changes. It just helped residents in that area. I've worked in the public sector with parking. Many people don't park in designated parking lots. Just ask the residents who live near a college, the Baldwin Park train stop, or any popular bus stop. For a variety of reasons, some people will park on the street in front of a house or an apartment building instead of a designated parking lot. Complaints arise. You could have prevented problems in the future for residents in that area had you cared to do so. I am now going to stop talking, but I am not going to shut up.
Tanya Lamone, followed by Angie Gillingham, followed by Manuel Salsedo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was here last time at the last meeting and I spoke to you about the issues. Thank you, Councilman Wu, for facilitating the investigation with the police. I just wanted to let you know that I have, I received a brief phone call on February 16th, the day after the meeting, from one of the lead detectives, Police Chief Bellstaff. I did not get to have a very long conversation with him. It was very short because during the conversation, my daughter had messaged and called me saying that one of the girls that had attacked her prior or was there to attack her was back on school campus, not a student, but she had managed to get back on campus. So when I expressed that to the detective, you know, one of the girls is back on campus, he says, "Well, if you need to get off the phone and call the police, then you need to do that." And I was a little bit confused by that because I'm like, "Well, you are the police." Like, I don't understand that. So I did have to get off the phone, call the school. So I did have to get off the phone, call the school, call, you know, to find out what was going on, but he had said during the conversation that he would give me a call back because I asked if I could call him back, and he had said that he's going into a meeting, but he would get back to me. I have not heard from him since, and I have not been reached out to by a detective about my case, about the battery case for my children, or anything like that. So there has been no communication, and so I'm asking for the council's help in this matter and this issue to keep my children safe and to keep all the children at the schools safe. Thank you.
Angie Gillingham, followed by Manuel Salsito, followed by Mitch Sterneman.
Hello, I'm speaking on item nine. I'm quoting from the background section of the agenda on the subject of districting. Democratic elections strengthen participatory democracy consistent with human rights. Back in 2016, when a great lot of us restaurants, well, a great lot of us residents came out to participate in the creation of district maps after being forced by a pending lawsuit, the city had not seen that kind of participation in a long time. Mini-maps were submitted by the public to the then-council. Today, the public was not given a real chance to participate for the submitted maps you have in front of you. Therefore, I would ask for this council to select map 105, which is the closest to the one of the maps that the public submitted back in 2016. Thank you for your consideration.
Manuel Salsito, followed by Mitch Sterneman, followed by John Schumaker.
Mayor, council, citizens of West Covina, and everybody present. I first want to start off by commanding you for having those students come in. That's really key, to see our leaders in the future. Man, I brought joy just to watch that. My name is Manuel Salsito. I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, proud Union carpenter. I live in the local area. I live, work, and recreate here in the vicinity near the six-cycle, you know, housing element project. The city, I believe that I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of the housing element update. The city should require the project to be built utilizing a local and skilled-trained workforce. Local hire and skilled-trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. So if you live here, you have the privilege to build here, you spend here, taxes are rent-revenue here, that's community wealth. In the recent 2020 report titled, "Putting California on a Higher Road: A Job and Climate Action Plan of the 2030 Year," the California Workforce Development Board conducted that investments in growth, diversity, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. Moreover, this, just this year, the South Coast Air Quality Control Management found that the use of state-certified apprenticeship programs or a skilled-and-worked trained force, workforce with a local hire component can result in air pollution reductions. That's if they live close by, they don't even have to drive that far, they can either walk or take a bike. Other cities have not hesitated to apply skilled-and-trained workforce requirements for private developments in the projects of their cities. Recently, the city of Hayward in Northern California adopted a skilled-and-trained workforce requirement into their general plan and municipal code. Local skilled-and-trained workforce requirements can boost economic development and mitigate transportation and greasehouse gas impacts by the minimizing of vehicles' miles traveled, just like we said, taking subway or getting really close, bikes and walking is the way to go. And the EIR should take and consider the risk of a COVID spread being exacerbated by construction activities. A number of construction sites have been identified in the past few years as a source of communities' spread of the COVID-19. Both LA County and the Center for Construction Research have released protocols and guidelines regarding how to minimize the risk of COVID-19 spreads from construction activities. In addition, the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters have developed and trained its members in ICRA, which is Infectious Control Risk Assessment. They're designed to protect workers and members of the public by controlling infectious risks from the construction activity. The city should analyze, implement, mitigate conditions of approval to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 and other infectious diseases for the project here at hand, its construction activity. Thank you for your time, and once again, I want to commend you all for allowing those young people to be here and do that, and that was, that's really key for our leaders in the future. We also have a skilled and trained workforce set that we like to, you know, start them off young and start them off right out of high school. So thank you for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mitch Sterneman, followed by John Schumaker, followed by Teresa Cozad. John Schumaker, followed by Teresa Cozad, followed by Winwin Zhang.
When I heard the name Sterneman, I was hoping that he might be related to Wayne, who has this, who might be my long-lost brother, because he looks a whole lot like me on Facebook. So, but he's not here, so I can't find out. You know, I've heard there were different parts of the family I'd never met, so I was hoping maybe this was one of them. You know, one of the things that, just briefly, on the districts, real easy change, District Four, move it 100 feet off of Azusa, it's no longer a point, and you can leave things the way they are. But I would anticipate the council will be putting it to a vote to get rid of districts, since some of the people on the council didn't like districts when it started, said they didn't want to do districts. One of the new council members has in the past said districts are racism, racism, they're racist, shouldn't have them. So hopefully we'll see if that person sticks by their word, you know, and actually does something about it. But we'll never, we'll never know for sure. So the other thing, too, is since I have a few seconds left, I thought I would use it, the state of the city. You know, it's going down a list, the last list that was published, and looking at the cities who are financially better off than we are. Oakland was one of them. San Bernardino, Stockton, Vallejo, Vernon, and we'll always remember the infamous Bell, City of Bell. All those cities are better run financially than we are. Mr. City Attorney, can I get a request that we be given copies of Mr. Wu text messages since he's doing it at a public meeting? Can I put in a request for those text messages?
Mr. Schumaker, I think you could do that afterwards.
That he has to save them since he is doing it during a public meeting?
You know, you got to address us, but you could request that later.
Okay. Would you please direct that I want a public information of what he is?
That's not my role.
Well, I just gave it a role. You know, do you have a role? You know? Do you really have one? He runs out to track people down. You know, he's telling you what to do, you know? My God, how embarrassing is that? You know? That's not my role. Yeah, it is. You said address you, so you need to address the proper person. Why don't you ask the person next to you? I thought it was kind of funny, or kind of odd, that the young lady from Russia was saying how much different our government is. In West Covina, we have one guy who runs everything, and you do what he tells you to do, and only what he tells you to do. Because we've had you say certain things over the last couple of years that gave the impression you were going to vote a certain way and then did just the opposite. What's wrong? He didn't tell you ahead of time the way you're supposed to vote? I'm addressing the mayor, the chair, you can answer. Well, I've got a minute thirty-two, I can wait.
Do it.
You know? That's the way I run. Oh, brother. You know, so, you know, it's amazing how, where'd you lose everything in the last couple of years? You know, you've completely changed. You know, you had ideas of what you wanted to do. You know, as I mentioned to the new superintendent, you know, listen to our city council and city manager, and then do the opposite. And you can't go wrong because they can't get anything right. They put up a building, and it is functional. We put up a restroom, and it's not hooked to a sewer system. And oh, by the way, everybody knew it wasn't hooked to a sewer system because that was one of the reasons at a meeting given that it was taking so long to build it. So to sit here and try to blame somebody else is unconscionable. Staff didn't screw it up, you guys got caught spending money on a, basically an outhouse. Before it was even built, I jokingly said, "What is it, an outhouse?" I even knew it wasn't hooked up to a sewer system. Jeez, you guys are unbelievably incompetent.
Teresa Cozad, followed by Winwin Zhang, followed by Colleen Rozati.
Okay. Actually, Mr. Carman, I want to pose some questions. They are about parks and recreation. As many of you may know, I live actually in Luddy's district, but I live north of the freeway, near Palm View Park. And the center at Palm View Park is not open yet. It is not open. And other centers in the city are now functioning. My question to you, Mr. Carman, is when will the center open, and with what services will it provide? What activities will be there? I actually went on the website to see if I could garner any information, and what happened is this. First off, there's a big advertisement for the Spring Festival. Then, when I click under Palm View Park, which is under the Parks and Recreation tab, I get a picture of a preschool, and I get the cost of the preschool, and I get the hours of operation, and it says, "Click here to register." When I click there to register, where am I taken? I'm taken to the Spring Festival. I can register for activities for the Spring Festival, I can buy a wristband, but there, that's it. That's where I'm taken. So, and then I clicked on recreation classes because I thought maybe that might give me an idea of some of the activities that are going on in the city, and it takes me to the October 2019, March 2020 Discover West Covina magazine. That's a little out of date, so I think the website needs to have that dating, okay? All right, so again, but my question is, when are you going to open the site, and what activities are you going to provide? And then I went to the Covina website just to get an idea of what's going on in other communities, and it is all up to date, and they are offering many, many classes for teens, children, as well as adults. So maybe y'all can get some ideas from that website. Now, back to the Spring Festival, which seems to be all that is happening in this city right now. Three more questions for you, Mr. Carman. Number one, the event is posted as a fundraiser for four nonprofits. If the city is not the host, what are the city's costs? Question number two, who is paying for the public safety and staff costs? Question number three, if someone should get hurt, how are the insurance issues being handled? Is the city covering it, or is each participating organization showing proof of insurance coverage? Okay? Three questions for you. Lastly, I too do not want to see the district change, so I believe, as far as I can tell, that map number 105 is the closest to what we have now. All you need to do is make a little change in district four. So that's my input on that. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Winwin Zhang, followed by Colleen Rozati, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Mr. City Manager, staff, and the members of the community. My name is Winwin Zhang, and I'm the West Covina Library Manager. Well, West Covina Library continues to provide sidewalk service and a phone service during closure for renovations. So if you needed to look up books, some library books and materials, and place them on hold for pickup, please call the library. And you need to know how to download free library ebooks, audiobooks, magazines, and music, and screen movies, and know how to use library databases and online resources, please call the library. So if you need, let's say, test forms or instruction booklets, call the library. If you, let's say, well, if you have reference question or information query, please call the library. The library phone number is three, sorry, it's my phone number. Another thing I wanted to mention that May is teen create month, and we would like to invite teenagers to join us to celebrate it with a special watercolor painting, odd activity. So the odd activity kit with materials and instructions available for pickup at the library. And also for March, we are giving out an odd activity for school-aged children, it's called Butterfly, let me see, let me see if I remember that, Butterfly Monarch Migration. And we also have an odd activity for adults as well, and it's called Embroidery Notebook. So odd activities available for pickup at the library, guess what? Call the library. Again, the library phone number is 626-962-3541. Thank you very much for your time and attention, and have a lovely evening. Good night.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Colleen Rozati, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by R. Robinson.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank council member Brian Tabatabai and the West Covina Firefighters Association, who were our guests that joined us at the 99th Birthday Bash for the city of West Covina. You were duly noted in attendance, so thank you for being there, we sincerely appreciate it. To our other guests and community partners who support West Covina Beautiful, your commitment has become outstanding and has allowed us to flourish for 74 years, and we appreciate that as well. It was a fabulous event, and we look forward to seeing you at the 100th birthday, which we're already starting to plan as we speak. We are moving forward on our 47th annual art contest titled Help Keep West Covina Beautiful. All four West Covina High Schools are participating. I picked up quite a few entries today, and they're absolutely stunning. We will be honoring those students at the upcoming April 30th Annual Arbor Day and Tree Planting Ceremony. It'll be held at Heritage Park. This is a community event, and we invite all of you to come out that are interested in helping, volunteering, participating, helping to plant. We have 50 trees this year that we're going to partner with West Coast Arborists in collaboration with Cal Fire and Water Conservationists. It's going to be a fabulous event, we can't wait. It's going to be a fabulous event. We can't wait to do that, bring some trees to Heritage Park. So again, thank you all that came to the Birthday Bash. We sincerely appreciate it. And I know everyone had a wonderful time. We look forward to seeing you at the 100th. Brian?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Bill Elliott, followed by R. Robinson, followed by JD.
Good evening, City Council, Bill Elliott. What about that house that the city council bought at Cameron Park that's supposedly going to be leased to the daycare center that existed there when we bought the house? It was supposed to be leased for one year. It's been like three years since we bought that house. It's supposed to be returned to parkland. It's supposed to be torn down. What happened to that? How can we never have any updates? I'd really like an update on that piece of real estate. You know, one thing the city really needs... We actually have a pretty active social media participation by the city on Facebook, but you know, don't forget Facebook is for old people. We need an Instagram page for the city. We really need that. Because all of those kids that were sitting up here tonight, very few are on Facebook. Yeah, TikTok is another one. And so we need to grow with the times on that. That's really important if we're going to reach these kids. Another thing, too, I really like, I've seen this scenario go down several times, where the kids shadow the elected officials and the city manager. I really think that should continue on through the entire city council meeting, because they have a skewed view of what it really is. And I think they should at least sit through public comments when the insults fly. And it's amazing to me that people actually think it's relevant to get up here in a city council business meeting and complain about what somebody said on Facebook. For God's sakes, man. So some people have very thin skin. The councilwoman from the 3rd District and I visited Shadow Park this week. I'd never been to that park. What a beautiful park that is. Wow, I was blown away. How gorgeous. South, excuse me, Shadow Oak Park is. I didn't realize it was spread out apart like it was. What a gorgeous park. We did see the new bathrooms. They're gorgeous. Looks modern, like a modern facility. I did notice a few maintenance issues, though. One, you know, glaring point was the drinking fountain is literally rusting away. It's leaning like this. It really, really needs to be addressed. That's really... We can do better than that. The Spring Festival, wow. The city staff is working so hard on this through the leadership of the city council. So many things have been added. This is going to be such a fabulous event with the carnival rides and the music and the food and the food trucks and the vendors. I mean, I'm really excited about it. I can't go on Saturday, but I'm going to be there on Sunday, and I'm really looking forward to that. I think the city should continue with things like this. Plus, we utilize that sportsplex for more than just the obvious use. I really like it's becoming more of a megaplex, a multiplex, if you will. This is the first city council meeting of West Covina's 100th year. We just had the 99th anniversary. This is the beginning of our 100th year as a city. And I think that's great. I'm looking forward to the 100th year celebration. I know it's probably going to... I mean, I'm assuming it's going to probably replace next year's Spring Festival. It's, uh... It's going to be a great event. We have a lot to be thankful for, the history of West Covina. And I wish the kids could be here to hear that. I think they should have stayed. As soon as the city council can, please remove all this plexiglass. It really hinders communication. You know, I know you hear every word I say, but we get up here as a community and speak at this podium more than you can understand anything they say. Because the, you know, the one lady is addressing David Carmany over here, and she doesn't realize it, but you can't hear a thing if your head is not turned toward this microphone. Supposed to be addressing the council anyway, not the city manager. District elections, gosh. We have been through this so many times. The districts were forced on us. We, as a community, didn't want it. We even voted it down. So now we're in districts, and everybody wants to change it back, or some people, not everybody. I think they're in a minority myself. I think it should be left alone. I think it's fine the way it is. We didn't want it, but this is what we have. It actually accomplished its goal. Thank you.
R. Robinson, followed by JD, followed by Jessica Shoemaker.
Good evening. I wanted to announce a community event tomorrow at 5:30 at the Covina High School Quad. There's something called an Alumni Festival. Every Covina High alumni and the students, free food, games, and prizes. So that's, everybody in West Covina who's a, who went to Covina High School is invited. So that's my announcement. Topic number two. Via, you know, public health. You guys want to have a public health department. Viruses have been around on the planet Earth since humans have been around. The only difference is the virus we've seen the last two years was engineered in a lab. And we've been living with it. Also, there's been, there's no virus exception in the US or California Constitution, I believe. And Western democracies, we had kind of a demonstration of city democracy tonight. They've had a pretty bad two years. You know, democracy in Australia looks like martial law. In Canada, it looks like martial law. We haven't got there yet, but it's coming. So that's a problem. And recently, the corporate and official media has failed the nation's residents. Total failure of the official media the past two years. The jab doesn't improve public health. If you don't believe me, the people of Israel are on their fourth go-around of the jab. And public health in Israel is a total disaster. Total disaster in Israel. Maybe the insurance companies in America and in the world are going to help us, help us right the ship. Because the death rate is up, and alls we have... The only difference between this year and the last two years is we had a engineered virus escape throughout the world, and we had a engineered solution, the phony jab, which doesn't do anything. The media that's failed us won't say anything negative about the jab, because their paychecks are paid for by the pharmaceutical industry. The United States and New Zealand are the only countries in the world that allow pharmaceutical advertisements. All the rest of the countries in the world can do without it. It used to be legal to advertise, you know, the Marlboro Man and cigarette smoking. But Pfizer is allowed to control our agenda. Anyway, since you folks want to have a health department someday, I would like a position paper on what the council thinks about experimental gene therapy, which is what the jab is and what we've been experiencing in the last two years. You know, I'm not a big fan of experimental gene therapy, and you can get a jab and get COVID anyway. So, you know, there you are. Informed consent is basis, is the basis of Western medicine. And unless you research the US Patent File, you can't find out what's in the jab. It's trade secret. You know, even medical doctors, you know, they're really not sure either. Anyway, how many... The medical effects that we've been experiencing in the last year from people that are jabbed are blood clotting, heart attacks, hyperimmune responses.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Autoimmune response.
Next speaker, please.
JD, followed by Jessica Shoemaker.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. And thank you for my five minutes of fame. I appreciate that. You earned the, that accolade, Honorable Counsel, when you won your election. And consequently, we, the residents, hold you to a far higher standard as we do the police. When they violate the law, they violate the law under color of law. And they get penalized accordingly. They're held to a higher standard. I came here as a resident, and I thought I was making an observation. I was told I was making an accusation. I apologize for that confusion, but I stand by what I said. It was an observation. I didn't think I would be told to shut up, but I'm not surprised. Because, Mr. Castellano, you told me to shut up sometime back when you weren't mayor. And your city manager accused me of being a danger at a gymnasium. The fact said that I somehow violated civil rights because I didn't gather signatures or gather releases to take videos at the gymnasium. While tonight, I saw everybody taking pictures, I hope you gathered those signatures. You've opened up yourself for a lawsuit, I would, based on what you said. As far as the emergency decoration, that's become pretty transparent. Probably the only thing that's transferring in this city council. You guys are milking it, like many other cities. But there are cities out there that have decided to take the high road and release themselves from that sort of excuse. And I say excuse because you take, for example, Cameron Park, pay-to-play situation that was taking place there, the situation that took place that Terry came up here and talked about at that other park. No activities taking place there. You take the snafu that happened over at Shadow Park, the urine and defecation that I imagine ran into the soil there at the park. Because the city manager, I assume he had the right to just go move forward with this construction. And obviously, you guys weren't too aware of it. You took the shovels up there, but you didn't know that the job wasn't getting done right. So you're using this excuse of emergency decoration to cover yourselves from the responsibility that being called Honorable Counsel carries. You need to step up to the plate, do your homework. Instead of just coming here and voting in concert, show some independence. You cannot convince me, and I don't think you can convince many other residents, that you four think identically alike. That's, that's just not possible. And especially when we residents are experiencing and are observing the contradictions. So in closing, as I got a minute and 15 seconds, Tony, and I called your name, but you can respond if you like. I guess that's licensed for you to respond. I didn't, I didn't make no accusation. It was an observation. Because as Ms. Potra said, ghetto is a pretty strong word. We get caught up on our emotions. You know I mimicked your accent. I was a bit insensitive about that. I apologize for that. In fact, the city manager told me I needed to stop apologizing out there in the court once. So we all get caught up in the emotion. I'm cool with that, you know? But you got to keep in mind that you guys are representing the city. You're not representing Ms. Lopez, Ms. Diaz, Mr. Castellanos, Mr. Wu, or Mr. Tabatabai. You're representing the city of West Covina. So please, conduct yourself accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jessica Shoemaker.
It's always different being on this side. You know, since I left elected office, I really have tried, first with school board, now here, to step back into the private side, let the people who were elected do their jobs. And, you know, I just find it at this point too hard to do that with the city council. And the reason is, at the last meeting, when some accusations were made about my family and about the police department, there was no thought to, my family are residents too, we deserve equal protection, before the police chief was demanded that he come down here and answer to why they haven't done something. You don't know the full story. And to hear that, you know, you went and talked to officers and things, they are not your employees. They are to investigate crimes. They are not to say, "Councilman Wu, since you want us to investigate this and do this, that's what we're going to do." And how dare you ask them to? You know, you can smirk at me all you want, because I know the truth of what's going on. I know the truth of what's happened. You know, I was surprised how happy I was to not be elected to sit on the council with you guys. It's that simple. And, you know, I just wish that you had had the intestinal fortitude when I was sitting in the hospital with my mom, who had a leukemia that could kill her, that you had just said, "I'm going to finance somebody else, because you know what, Ms. Shoemaker? I can't handle when a strong person stands up to me." Because that's what it boils down to. I was the voice that wouldn't just bow down to you. I give Dario and Luddy credit, because I know you guys are good people. I don't know what's happened and why you continue to allow some of these actions to happen. You, this is, you are not these people. You know that an individual council member shouldn't be calling a police chief and demanding information on an active investigation or questioning why something hasn't happened. And maybe the answer to you, Mr. Wu, is they're doing their jobs. And you're not part of it. So learn to respect staff. Let's talk about the Shadow Oak bathrooms. You didn't think, "Oh, wow, this is going to cost a lot less? What's been cut out?" Or was it just enough to have a shell of a building up? I mean, come on, guys. You're better than this. And you know you are. You know, it's funny, because just a couple of minutes... You know, it's funny, because just a couple of months ago, I had a Facebook memory where I talked about how happy I was that you two got elected, and that I was finally excited again for what our council can do and the changes you guys could make to this city. And I've just watched it all drain away. And why? Dario, you grew up here like I did. You know this isn't the city we grew up in. You know when things were better and how it should be run. You know, I don't know what your plans are for this election. And, you know, I have what you've said in the past, and I don't know if that's still true. But I hope that if you decide to run, that you find yourself again, and find the man who grew up here, who had the ideas, and get them implemented. You know, a lot of people have said to me recently that they saw the toll the council was taking on me and how much happier I've been. And I'm saying, I can see the same in you. And I know it's hard to be attacked all the time, but at some point, maybe it's time to start listening to what the residents are saying to you. And I'm saying to you, I'm coming out of the private life to say in front of you, how could you just sit there and allow him, Emir Protem Diaz, your former, as far as I know, investigator? Can you imagine if an elected official had come to you like he did and demand information?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I have no further speaker slips, Mayor.
Thank you, Assistant City Clerk. Thank you to all the speakers.
For the chair, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
It's a little past 8:30. We have a public hearing for our redistricting maps that is scheduled at 8:30.
Okay.
With your permission, if we can take that out of order and take that now.
Let's do it.
We're ready when, if you want to open.
Okay, and that is?
Item number nine.
Number nine. So, public hearing number nine, that will be presented by who?
We have our consultant, Mr. Jeff Simonetti, here to present the PowerPoint, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jeff Simonetti with the National Demographics Corporation. This evening is public hearing number three regarding the draft maps. So this evening, we'll be talking about the redistricting process. We'll talk about a few of the key deadlines, the next steps in hearings, and also, we will be reviewing the draft maps. We have five maps for your consideration this evening, and we'd be like to receive feedback from both you and the general public regarding your thoughts on the maps. So as a reminder, from our last few hearings, we've talked about the redistricting rules and goals that are associated with the process here, and there are three main sets of goals. First pertains to the federal laws, and particularly, the Federal Voting Rights Act has two main key components. First, we have to have generally equal population, and there can be no racial gerrymandering associated with the, with the maps. In addition, we have Assembly Bill 849, which was passed since the original redistricting went through in the city of West Covina. We have, have to have maps that are geographically contiguous. Where practicable, we need to have undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest. We have to have easily identifiable boundaries. And the districts have to be compact, and that means that you do not bypass one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. In addition, we can look at potential future population growth and preserving the core of existing districts. But again, those have, are in rank ordered, and they are following that. So federal laws have the highest priority, followed by the California criteria for cities, and then our other traditional redistricting principles. Here again is our summary of our existing districts, and as a reminder, these are the existing districts as drawn, but with the 2020 census data in. So as you can see, districts one, two, and three currently have a majority Latino citizen voting age population, and then we have approximately 110,000 residents. In addition here, as we also can show this graphically in terms of where your citizen voting age population, this is the Latino citizen voting age population. And again, the blue and purple colors are lower percentages. The red and yellowish colors are higher percentages. As you can see, for both districts one, two, and three, you have a pretty high Latino citizen voting age population. In terms of possible neighborhoods and communities, again, looking for your feedback on this, we've talked about some of the freeway corridors and the commercial areas. We've received some testimony, potentially two, looking at a district north of the 10 freeway. With the Azusa Avenue Corridor, are there particular HOAs or neighborhoods that you'd like to identify as well, and other areas? In terms of the next steps, we are required to do at least four public hearings, and this is our third public hearing. So we had our first two on November 18th and January 13th. March 1st is our public, first public, or third public hearing. And then, the districts have to be adopted by ordinance. So we are looking for March 15th as your ordinance introduction hearing. April 5th will be your ordinance adoption hearing. And this must be completed by no later than April 17th of 2022, which is the city deadline for us to submit our map to the registrar of voters. And the map that is approved will be subject to the November of '22 elections and beyond. So for the remainder of this evening's hearing, I'll ask if there are any questions regarding the presentation, and then we'll review the draft maps. And this evening, what we were looking for is for the city council and the public to give us feedback regarding the draft maps and any changes or edits the council would like to see regarding those maps. What we need to do is bring back a map that you, you believe would be suitable for you to bring forward, because at the first introduction of the ordinance, the map has to be posted as is, and it has to be something that is, is ready to move forward on for March 15th. So again, we're looking for feedback on the draft maps, and if there are either changes or edits that you'd like to see pertaining to that. So I'll stop here, see if there are any questions from the council regarding the presentation, and then we'll get into the draft maps.
Fellow council members, any questions? Seeing none, we could get to the review of the draft maps.
Okay.
Excuse me, if I may, Mayor, we do have some speakers.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's do.
Our first speaker.
You want to, okay?
Either, either way, it's fine.
Okay, but yes, please.
Continue.
Is that, yeah, I have it, I have it up in a second. Drag it to the other screen. Whoa. Learning something new every day. There we go. Okay. Now, so what we've done here is, you'll see each one of the, the maps that we have, we've drawn five potential maps in terms of draft maps. And what you'll see is, the, the maps that are proposed are in the colors, and the existing districts you'll be able to see are in, in the dotted lines. So map one here, and, and again, so one of the things that, that you'll, you'll recall is, at the, the, the last hearing, where we made mention of some of the areas that we needed to, to look at regarding contiguity. There was this area here, if you recall, that we had an area that came directly to a point on the census blocks. So we basically redid that area and pushed, so you, so you can see the legend. So the District Three went into where the existing District Two is, to get rid of that, that point contiguity issue, and then also for pushing District Five into current District Three. And this map, again, we had received some feedback from the general public regarding potentially looking at a northern district along the freeway, and having, having an area that would be north of the 10 freeway. To make districts that are population balanced, there's more population above the, the 10 freeway than you would have just as one district. So again, it would, there's, there's no way to draw just the 10 freeway, above the 10 freeway as just one district. So this is attempting, again, to, to show that you can do that with, with two districts. Plan 102, again, attempts to consolidate some of, some of the areas, so that we have, again, two represented northern districts. This one, instead of, again, having the area here, in, in 101, if you recall, District Three pushed further south. Here, we have District Five capturing the, the eastern portion of the city, District Three, again, running north to south, and then also, again, making two districts north of the 10 freeway. Plan 103, is a slight, a slight, again, iteration of this, but instead of, again, having areas here substantially to the, to the west for District Three, put some areas, again, around South Hills Country Club for, to, to balance out the population. But this generally follows the, the principles of, of map 102. Map 104, this is a, keeps generally the, the districts as is, and, and again, just to, to remove that point contiguity issue that, that we had, you'll see here that District Three, excuse me, District Four pushes into the area around District Three where we had earlier, where we were talking about the point contiguity. But other than that, to, and again, to balance out some of the population, we made some movement between Districts One and Three, but generally following the, the general areas of, of where the current districts are. And then finally, map 105, keeps, again, generally as, as much as possible, keeping the, the districts currently as is, and, again, removing some of that area of point contiguity where, where we had earlier, but again, generally following the, the same general districts as, as we are currently. So we can, again, open up the public hearing, and would, we can, again, focus on any particular maps that either you or the general public would like to see.
Thank you for that. Now let's open up the public hearing.
Our first speaker is Jerry Potters, followed by Mr. Steve Bennett.
I am here because the last public hearing, I conveyed a viewpoint that I have rethought, listened to people, read about the district stuff, and I was wrong. I think you should admit when you were wrong. I think we should, I would, ideally, in an ideal world, we'd go back to at-large, but we're not going to do that. So the district, I think, would be the best for the residents, is the one that is as close to what we have now. No change, other than what the law requires. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Bennett.
So going back several years, I've been kind of one of the most outspoken anti-districts person in the city. And so I, I still stand with that. Districts are not what's going to unite the city. In fact, Districts has divided the city, because all we hear from you guys is, that's not my district. That's not my district. That's not. And it's what we told everyone. We said, hey, when this happens, that's what you're going to hear. So we hear constantly from people, oh, you're not in my district, I don't want to hear from you. Contact this person, he's your district. So first of all, that's what needs to happen, is we need to go back. You guys have the power to make that choice, or if you want to insulate yourself from making a decision, put it on the ballot. I've been fighting for that for years. Put it on the ballot. You have that power. Insulate you from making that decision, because whatever the voters want. Somebody said earlier that they don't think enough people want it. I disagree. I think more people want it than you want, but we'll know if it goes to ballot. That's, that's the way it works. 2009 Measure D, we voted overwhelmingly to stay at at-large, so I, I think it's more possible that way. It's amazing how some people have flipped their opinions once power comes into their situation. And talking about these maps, I agree we should not make any changes that are not needed. At the last public hearing, NDC put up a slide that showed three circles that were in problem areas according to the Fair Maps Act. And they said they're not contiguous, because they meet at a corner. And so what we get now are these five maps, where instead of moving the line maybe one street over, two streets over, because you can split precincts. We did that in the original exercise. But instead of modifying drastically, because some of those are fairly drastic, we can modify by just taking a precinct and splitting it, and drawing the line down a different street. My neighborhood, it goes right down the middle of my neighborhood. We were a precinct before, now we're two precincts. So I know it can be done, and it can be done easily. So at the area where you're talking about BKK, where four and five and all those three came together, instead of making these drastic, cut off the, the bottom of three, you can just move a street, and you're going to have what you need to be contiguous. When, 2017, when we got sued by three individuals led by another individual, I believe Bill Elliott called them racist, but either way, they're three people. So those people sued us and forced us to look at districts. And during that long process, months' process, long amount, we had countless community meetings. We had them in almost every one of our major parks, one of our major community centers. We had tons of input from, from residents, from everyone. Some of you were a part of it, I think really only Tony at this point, and he spoke out against districts, even though he ended up voting for them. But he, he spoke out against them, even signed the petition that I tried to run to stop them, but still voted for them. And so that long process, for whatever reason now, you guys have condensed it to, at the next meeting, you've got to do a first reading, and at the next meeting after that, you've got to do a second reading, which is in the next four weeks. So we're looking at maps for the first time, basically, and you're holding a gun to our heads, saying that we've got to have maps figured out before April 17th. Whereas the previous council that brought us to districts took months, countless meetings, lots of community involvement, 20-some maps, I think it was, I know it was a lot, and a resident actually created map, was selected, not a consultant map. So I hate the fact that you guys waited till the last minute. You've known this for a year. I, I knew this when I ran in 2020, that you had to redistrict this year. So I know you guys know. You had all this time to figure it out. I know you had to wait for census data, I get that, but still, you've had that for a while, too, because that came out. But we're now racing against the clock because we waited too long. Some other problems. When we originally did maps, with those maps, we had demographic data as residents to look at, so we could view the maps. NDC gave us that information. For every one of the maps, we knew what the breakdowns were, whether it was printed on the back or something else, there was something. There's nothing here. We don't know how it's affected, we just know that it's colorful. Hey, that's a little color here, and a little there. It's not really the case. This is 10 years of voting, 10 years. We deserve a little bit better data from NDC, the same company who helped us before. And I ask you to not change the district maps more than just a few streets to make what you need to do to meet the law.
Our next speaker is R. Robinson.
The five of you have a golden opportunity to solve a really big problem. The five districts in West Covina is a really big problem, and there was a lawsuit that scared us into, to forming this really lame system that we're living under. I mean, that's what's been going on for 30 or 40 years. I mean, we seem to be going downhill, downhill, downhill. But you have, the five of you have a, a golden opportunity to reverse the trend. The agreement that West Covina agreed to expired in November of 2020. And we can go, it'll be no problem if we And we can go, it'll be no problem if we go to an at-large system of voting. It worked for West Covina for, you know, 60 years. And I thought it was a pretty reasonable, fair system. The California Voting Rights Act, I believe, is getting challenged by cities that have the money to do that, and I hope it's going to be manicured and set aside in a substantial way. But I didn't see any of the five maps that impressed me very much. You know, 102 is a little bit more compact than the rest of them, and I think that's attractive, 102. But on a scale of 1 to 10, with 10 being great, you know, Map 102 is, you know, a 2 or 3. It's the best of the worst. But I hope you guys can just step up and think outside of the box, and try to figure out any good reason for moving internal boundaries? You need a consultant every census? It's not doing any, West Covina, any good. And the five of you have the power to get us back to a more rational way of voting for a council. So I hope you guys have the stamina and wisdom to figure that out, and get us back to at-large, and cancel all these maps. But 102 is miserable, but I guess that's the one I support the most. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further speakers. Mayor, I just would like to note that during our public comments portion, two of our residents, Ms. Angie Gillingham and Ms. Teresa Cozad, voiced their approval, or their favor of two of the maps, of one of the map, Map 105. So they both spoke in favor of that map. And then also, Mr. Shoemaker discussed the district boundary lines also. So I just want to make sure that that isn't captured at this public hearing as well.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
You can go ahead and discuss. Okay. I'll just make this quick. I actually didn't want, I want, well, I wanted to leave it as is. I didn't want to make any changes. I thought this was ridiculous, but I understand federal law requires it. I do understand that the public put so much time and worked very hard, and it was actually 23 maps that was reviewed. 20 were submitted by members of the community. And I do know that the map that we currently have was drawn out by one of our residents, and he is a community member. Therefore, for me, the work was already done. I would like to keep it to the closest of the current map that we have, which is 105. And I would like to just stick with 105.
Council, any more comments? Mayor Protem?
I'll just, I like 105 as well. I, too, would say that we should keep it as close as what we have right now. I don't want to make much change. I think that it was good to say that maybe if we moved the line, what, 100 feet, that that would satisfy the obligation that we need to meet. So right now, to me, 105 seems the closest to that.
Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I have a question, okay? I agree with the council, okay, members regarding, okay, I went through 2017, okay? I went through a lot, they have a lot of map, a lot of meeting, a lot of community input. So, and I, no choice, we have to go to the census, okay, 2020, so we'll stick with 10 years. I agree with some residents talking about we should stick with our original map. I have no problem with that. I think that people spend so much time, we should honor that decision. But you say we have a sum of, okay, population that, okay, or there's kind of off island. But is that, can we, I know number five possible is the least changed, but can we still do something to stick with more close to the original map, so that previous people, hard work, didn't get totally altered? Even we have to change some of, I think, basically, you took some of District 3 population and moved into District 4. And, okay, the rest is the same, but can you move less to that possibility? Or no, this is something that we have to choose tonight? Well, 105 is closer to the original. Can you explain to us?
Sure. I mean, you know, we can make changes if we get direction from the council. The one thing, when you're talking about the area of contiguity, we, there was a discussion whether we can split census blocks. You theoretically can split census blocks, but the challenge with that is it makes the data unofficial. So the smallest, basically, building block that we have from the U.S. Census Bureau is the census block. And if we were to split a census block, let's say, for example, you have a census block that has 100 people in it, and you split the census block in two, is there 50 people on the left side and 50 people on the right side? Is it 70 people on the left side and 30 people on the right side? You have to take a guess, right? So you have unofficial data at that point.
Oh, got it.
So, again, it's technically possible, but again, you would have unofficial data at that point. The challenge that we have in the area that we were talking about with the point contiguity is that if you look at the census blocks and the way that they're established, and let me zoom in on this area here. The reason why we have to add in this area to the west of where that original point contiguity was, is that the census blocks that are essentially, those building blocks here to the west, run all the way out to the western edge of the city, to the city limits. So basically, from essentially this area, all the way out to the dotted lines here. So without splitting the census blocks, I mean, making unofficial data, that's the way that if we're going to resolve that point contiguity, that is one of the ways that we have to do it. And just understand that there's limited things that we can do, considering the central building blocks that we have for them now.
Got it, got it. The point is, the voting block, that very difficult for you to really split them, okay, to the, so small, because possible problematic. My question would be, then you're moving, basically, some population from the District 3 into District 4. Am I right, on the south side?
Yes.
That's what I see over here. So in that way, okay, and the four, the five district population now, I know before last time, okay, the old map, okay, in 2018, okay, the District 3 has the most population. And so now you're moving some, is that five district or the similar population?
So, in terms of Plan 105, District 3 would have a population of 21,304 residents. Now remember, there's not a requirement to have exactly equal population.
10% difference, right?
Yeah, 10% difference, and your population deviation for Plan 105 is 6.11%. So you're under the 10% population deviation.
How many percent 11?
6.11.
Only 6.1%.
Yep.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions or comments? No, seeing none. Is there anything else from our consultant to add to the presentation? Councilman Wu?
So what should we do tonight? We're going to choose the one map to go forward? That's the one, the one is what we have to do tonight?
You can either give us direction on a map as is, or if there are changes that you'd like to make prior to that.
Then I'm going to move the motion to use the Map 105, that one's closer to what we originally have, to be our new district map for the future.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu to use Map 105 moving forward for our ordinance, and a second by Mayor Protem Diaz. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Yeah, before I vote, I just want to say that I think Map 105 guarantees that those who weren't able to vote for their representation in the last election do get to vote for their representation in this coming election. And because it's the closest to what we already had, and the changes really are to a district that recently had an opportunity to vote, and these people get a chance to vote again, I think that is the most democratic. So I will vote yes on Map 105.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz? Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Thank you.
Five zero.
Just wanted, in case, I know we switched around the public hearing, so we had just finished public comments, and we would go to city manager now.
Thank you, Assistant City Clerk. And Mr. Carmini, would you please provide us with the city manager's report?
Actually, Mayor? Mayor?
Oh.
May the city manager answer the questions that the residents have?
Sure. Questions from public comment?
Be happy to. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try and respond briefly to the public comments. Resident, thank you for coming again. I will follow up on her request. I understand the distinction that we not interfere in a criminal matter, but I'll certainly see to it that she gets the conversation she deserves with the member of our police Couple of our speakers liked District number 105, which is the one you chose. So here we are. We had a number of representatives of the carpenters. I appreciate that they came. We brought this to your item tonight on your agenda. It had been through the planning commission. It's a very serious moment. It's serious as a heart attack, in terms of the state comment on the housing element. We've been in quite a bit of communication with state HCD, and I'd just like to say, the reason this is on your agenda tonight is we wanted to elevate it, make sure that the public was aware, make sure that the council had a public vetting of it as we go through this process. Housing dominates all aspects of public policy these days, and so these are going to be some critical decisions being imposed on us by the state. How we react to that will define West Covina for years to come. Mr. Shoemaker made editorial comments about redistricting and about city financial management, would note that we've addressed the major unfunded liability in terms of the pension bonds. And there is a process by which we honor public records requests. We honor hundreds, literally thousands of them, and we get them all the time, and we're really good at responding to those. And so we would encourage anyone that wanted to make a PRR to do so through the office of the city clerk. Teresa Cozad asked a number of direct questions about Palm View Park. We're in the process of reopening all of our parks. The schedule for Palm View is we're going to have that one up and open again in April. It won't look like what it was. Palm View's preschool had extremely low enrollment, so we're going to pivot. We're currently looking to add a, what we used to call mommy and me classes, now we call them parent and me classes. And we're also working with Mount SAC for older adult programming, especially for individuals with special needs and developmental disabilities. I'll work on her concern that that information wasn't available, see if we can do a better job of getting that out. She also asked about the costs and the staffing and the safety of the event. I was going to mention in the manager's report tonight, a number of aspects of that. Safety of our residents is of primary concern. Fire safety, police safety, food handling, public health safety, all of those things are being honored and respected. Sanitation, I can tell you, just the stand-up for an event of this size, the sanitation supplement bill will be in the range of $60,000 by the time we add porta-potties and handwashing stations, et cetera. But we're working very hard to make sure that the event is safe, and that we follow the principles of risk management, which is avoidance of risk and transference of it in all of our agreements. It's the first year the city's done this kind of event, but we think it'll be an event we can be proud of. Always appreciate our library director being here. I don't think there was follow-up. I would thank West Covina Beautiful. Colleen mentioned the 99th birthday. I know they continue to function on the Arbor Day programs. I know there's all that information for you in a moment about our plans for the 100th birthday celebration. Mr. Elliott asked about the status of the house. I'll confirm a date, but I know that one is out to bid to be demolished together. That's been bundled with former fire station number one, which was also condemned, and that's in the queue. Can't read my own writing. Apologize. I probably owe him another response, but I've lost it. And I think that's all I've got. Oh, thanking Mr. Robinson for his comments about the community event in Covina High School. I hadn't heard about that, but glad to know that those alumni are going strong. I think that's all I've got this evening. Available for questions. Thank you.
Councilman Wu?
Okay, I think you missed, okay, and Mr. Ellis talking about the Cameron, okay, the property, that I think we, the council, already approved to demolish. So maybe you can share with us what is the status? Are we going to, that supposedly we purchased that, should be the park land, from the, we sold the Sunset Park, okay, for the hospital? So those money have to go to park purchase only? So it has been converting to the, when we're going to do the demolish?
As I mentioned, we went through a public bid process. I don't know when that contract will be let, but I know it's been bid out and is scheduled to be proceeding. Not only that house that was mentioned, but also the fire station. Those two are bundled together. So I'll hold the exact date, but that has gone through a public bidding process, and that's still our intention to demolish.
Okay, second question, the resident talking about the Spring Festival, what is the finance, how we pay for it? So maybe you can share the entry fee and plus the, okay, the vendors, so that will be paid for itself, right? Am I right?
Yes, sir. I was going to cover, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'll defer to our Assistant City Manager, if she's available, to answer those questions right now. I was going to cover some of that in the manager's report. Happy to do it now. We'll allow Roxanne to have the floor.
Through the chair, if I may, to answer Councilman Wu's questions, really, which were the residents' questions regarding the Spring Festival around entry, gate entry fees. General admission is $5, $3 for West Covina residents and senior citizens. Children who are over the age of 12 will be charged, you know, the going rate. Those 12 and under are free. Those fees, along with vendor fees, vendor fees range from businesses from $300 for a space versus food vendors, about $400 a space. Those go back into the event itself. So those fees were designed to help cover some of the costs, and then, really, depending on how well the carnival does, too, there is an opportunity for some revenue to be gained there. So the city is really doing what we can to both support the small businesses that are out there, the food vendors, the non-food vendors, as well as being responsible in a fiscal manner by finding ways that we can put the money back into the event, in hopes that we can do right by our residents, and being responsible in the way that we spend and fundraise monies.
My understanding, that basically, we have about 150, okay, vendor, okay, predominant that our local business join. So basically, city kind of using this opportunity to promote our local business, okay? And I heard about, right now, we cannot accept any more applicant, because it's like overwhelming, people want to join.
Yes, we're still getting interest. We're at our capacity as far as what we can supply, you know, what we can provide, and really being able to do this in a safe and responsible manner. So we are at our capacity.
I think it's a good problem that people want to attend and join, okay, and meaning they have a confidence in the city. But thank you so much, Roxanne, for your hard work and helping, oh, I think we have a seven group, right, including the NAACP, okay, and Chinese-American Association, Japanese Cultural Center?
Yep, you have a total of seven community-based organizations who are helping to...
Put this together.
Exactly, exactly.
So, thank you so much. I think it would be a great event. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
City manager, well, and staff. I know Ms. Cozad mentioned the website, which I have been pushing for a while, too. When are you guys going to update that, for at least the basic and the full website updating that I've requested back then? That's question one.
I'm going to ask Roxanne, I know we're in conversation with a couple of the vendors to get a contract in front of council.
Through the chair, if I may, to answer Councilwoman's questions regarding the website. Point is well taken and noted. One of the things that we will be doing internally is going through with each department and updating their various pages, so that what is current or what is on the website being shown currently is up to date and relevant to the community. So that would be step one. And City Manager Carmini alluded to the next part of the process would be selecting a vendor to come would be selecting a vendor to come in and to assist with those upgrades as well as some communications aspects of it as well. I know we are going through some proposals and making sure again that we're responsible fiscally with the public's resources in that.
As for our own internal department updates, when would that be completed?
We'll put together a timeline and send it out to the departments and we'll, we can update you accordingly. So we can hope to have some movement on it within the next week we can have.
Okay, please let me know. I'd like to make sure I'm updated on that. My next, oh, is it same thing to follow up with this? No, okay. My next question was the Cameron Park House. I know previously I've mentioned that I would have loved to see like a public-private partnership or at least what community would like there. I know we have that house and I know it needs to be possibly demolished. It's or, but is there, can you, well, I don't know where they left off with that, but I haven't spoken to Roxanne coming in on that. I know previously I've spoken to Mike Cressop last year. So on that one, I know you're talking about demolishment, but I'd like to see what they would, what that's going to be. So that I'd like to make sure that's on your radar. And that was my, just two things. That's it. Thank you.
And I'll add to that regarding the website. I've been following up with Roxanne a lot to stay on top of how that's going. So we'll keep pushing. I know it's one of your initiatives you've been pushing a long time. Councilman Wu.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I think I want to, okay, remind, okay, council member, we approved last year before we have Roxanne, Roxanne, okay, and hired in December. But prior to that, we approved, remember, we talked about, okay, and discovery, discover West Covina, we talked about.
Communication.
Community. We talked about the scheduling, remember, we approved, okay, and that time Polina is helping us, okay, and to get this together. So we need to see the budget and we already approved. And including website, they say they're talking about hire some profession to help us to update this or they have a staff. I think we should continue, maybe Polina can kind of chime in to help us. That what we approve because again, Roxanne only coming in the end of December, okay, but we approved that thing prior. So maybe we can continue pushing the group of our city, okay, all the management to, with their staff to work on this communication, okay, and including what that, because not everybody using their Facebook, especially a lot of senior, and we talked about last year, that we still see, can we put a schedule into, okay, and the senior centers, so all the senior can see what the schedule, what the training, what is the, okay, activity. And I know they have a couple of pages last time and you showed to us. So I think this is something, can we continue looking to it, to continue to push that thing? So.
Not to continue to look into it, to actually do it.
Yeah, I understand, but we, we want to have the city in the hall to make this thing, okay, the continuity while the new staff coming in and suddenly everything drop to her.
And I know our Assistant City Manager just came in and I should be barking.
Yeah, we done everything to her, yeah.
But I'm not, and like I said, I just want to see this. But by next council meeting, I would like to see that timeline so that if a resident does ask or we know what's going on and that this continues to stay on radar until it gets done. Thank you.
I'd like to add that since we have our weekly meetings, I do have it in my notes that I will be following up. I have a date of April 15. So that's something that's already in my notes. So we will, we're working on that.
Thank you.
But I was giving her a chance to, you know, get some things done first. And then when we have our meeting close to April 15, I'll follow up on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Roxanne, anything you'd like to comment?
I just want to add one more point that we've kind of alluded to a little bit regarding the Discover magazine. You know, we're still on schedule to have that released in April. So we're still working towards that.
Good job. Thank you.
Of course.
Any more questions of staff, comments? No? Okay. Thank you for that. And continuing on, City Manager, did you have more on the report?
I have a brief report for you this evening. I know you've got other businesses tonight. Next slide, if I may. Wanted to mention that this week, our Assistant City Manager Morales held a meeting with several Glendora Avenue businesses. Mayor Protem was in attendance. Primary concerns in that block are safety and security. This was the first meeting and I think we had some interest in some follow-up meetings and getting more participation from the, from the affected businesses there. They weren't especially interested in social promotion or events, but they were worried about homeless. They were worried about graffiti. They were worried about safety. And so that's going to be our focus when we return. They wanted us to come back and so we will.
Councilman Wu.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you, but how many people show up? If they are, they're talking about they're ready and that we try to help them to put the BID, Business Improvement District. And so they can work together with all this 30, 40 business, okay, and everybody pitching. So they can set up their like home association. So they can group together to kind of pay the basics, the security and maintenance. And city will do the rest. So how many people show up?
Through the chair, we had six businesses in attendance.
They have a 30 business, why only six show up? We notify them, right? So you sent out the mail and then?
We did notify and the attendance was not good. It was a low attendance. Of those that came, there was a high level of interest, but they realized that they need to sell us to other businesses.
With everybody, okay, this morning at the meeting, I heard about Mayor Protem, they are willing to talk to each of the business over there, spend late time to talk, maybe kind of talk to them. Maybe you can share with us. I think this is important to put the BID over there, improve this history.
Right. We had, I think, three business property owners that I think are interested and I'm going to meet with them on Friday and give a little presentation about what my plan is. We had some business owners that were really interested in creating some sort of a security, maybe get security for that area. And we had one woman that said, look, I want to do something. What can I do? And I thought, this is great. We have a business owner that wants to do something. And so I want to help. And I'm going to go out there and we're going to talk to all the business owners there. And we're going to try to see if we can get a petition so that we can get this going, so we can get some security there. Because we have a lot of complaints, but nobody wants to do anything. So I'm willing to do that. And that's going to be my little project. And I hope that I can do something about that. So it's, it's small stepping stones, but you know what? It's, we'll get there. And I really truly feel that we can convince some business owners to pitch in and get some security there. And then once we get security there, then I think that we can work on beautifying it through the city in terms of adding lighting there and to our trees, making it nicer, cleaner. And I think that will bring even more businesses in. And that's my goal. That place needs some help and I want to help. That's my, that's what I want to do.
Thank you. Councilman Tabatway.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also just wanted to give a suggestion to staff. There is a business owner, Joey Mancuzzo from Anna's Pizza, who has a great relationship with a lot of the owners on that Glendora Avenue. And I think, you know, I know we're doing our outreach, but, but, I mean, he really has developed relationships. So I really think that including him in this process, right, including someone that these business owners trust and has really done a lot for those businesses on Glendora. I know in March, he's planning to have another event there. He's had several events, trying to keep the businesses open on Glendora. And his business technically isn't even on Glendora. So, you know, when you have a resident business owner who is that kind of resource, I really think that we would be doing a disservice if we really want to create a bid to not be inclusive of him. So I know he's, he's really wanted to be involved in this and he's outreach. And so that, that really is, is something I think that needs to happen. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any further comments? Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you did reach out to that business owner, but I do remember, I think last year or the year before, and Councilman Wu was with me at that.
Home meeting with him.
And we actually met at his Anna's Pizza for all like the Glendora. And, oh yeah, you were there too. Polina was there too. And I remember Joey was frustrated too with the other businesses because we showed up, we were expecting a lot. And Joey said, they were all going to come. And then we said, what happened?
I think we only have the three business show up.
Three businesses that only showed up.
Entire city is over there.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. They're pretty much the entire city. And Joey told us, he actually recruited himself. And he said, they all told him they were going to be there. So he was actually surprised too that they didn't show up. So I'm not sure, I mean, if you can follow up the reasons why they're not showing up, it'd be good to know. I don't know if it's their schedule or anything, but I do remember at that time, they told Joey they will be there. And I believe Polina had contacted them, all the other businesses, and they all said that they were going to be there. And not only three, you have three only showed up. So I don't know how we can make this work, but.
We're going to work on that.
No, I think, okay, I want to commend, okay, Mayor Protem Diaz, she want to go to, now wasn't talking, she willing to go, okay, door knocking, talk to the business, visit them, and show them that you are sincere or council sincere, want to help them. So possible they thinking about we just, not just a mouth, wasn't just talk. So I think the action with you willing to go, wasn't talking over here. I think willing to go over there, door knocking and talk to each of business. I think, okay, I think it will work. Okay, I think, let's give a try this way. And if you need my help, okay, you want me to work with you, I will work with you to talk to them. Let's see how can we, okay, united, okay, and then put this together. I think this is the only way, persuade them, tell them how to benefit, okay, to them.
Right.
Okay, I think possible to mail to them or some people think about they are the person, but end up is not. So I think we should go there, okay, and talk to each of business.
I personally think.
For the leadership, okay.
I personally think that we need to hold our hand and go step by step and talk to them. Have them sign a petition. I mean, we just, we need to just contact them and talk to them personally. And I don't think the email, they probably won't want to come. Most people say, yeah, that sounds like a great idea, but they don't show up. So.
Thank you for being willing to lead that effort and go door to door. And I think we should engage Joey from Anna's Pizza. He, you know, as Councilman Tabatway, he knows a lot of people along that Glendora Strip. And I think he would also bring, bring a lot of effort and help as he did before. So let's continue that. Thank you.
We'll follow up on those suggestions. Thank you for those. Just had two other things I wanted to mention tonight.
Please continue.
Sportsplex and the 100. Oh, wanted to mention Shadow Oak Bathroom. Council's been following that one. Bathroom was connected as of Friday, the 25th of February. The issues were resolved. Facility is now open for use.
Meaning we could flush.
On to the Spring Festival. Yes, sir.
All right.
This is our last meeting, really before the big event. We wanted to highlight it tonight. The Spring Festival is a major community event. It'll be held March 12th and 13th. I think the carnival will be a popular feature. Also think it'll provide some revenue for the event as well as a draw. There'll be live performances. There'll be more than 80 food and retail vendors. We're full up on vendors. We're not completely full up on stage time, but that is also fast filling. We're going to have shuttle services for off-site parking. Shuttle runs will be from City Hall, from Shadow Oak Park, from Cortez Park, and from West Covina High School. And we've got a schedule for those, 11:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. on Saturday and 11:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. on Sunday. I mentioned the headliners. We've got some of the favorite bands from the city's summer concert series, including Cold Duck will be performing. Past Action Heroes is an 80 tribute band. Funk Doctors will be playing some Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. Remix will bring soul to the festival. I think we've had suggestions about a number of those and we've tried to incorporate as many as we could. I think it's going to add up to a very nice event. Lastly, I wanted to ask the council and the public to save the date. The city turns 100 next year on Friday, February 17. We're going to plan a West Covina Centennial Dinner at the Sportsplex. And we'll also have some events that weekend to follow. And that's all I've got this evening for the manager's report. Thank you.
Councilman Wu.
Okay, regarding the entertainment of the Spring Festival, you forgot the seven group, they all have their performance. I think we have, okay, N E Church have Gospel starting the event on the Saturday. Okay, I think it's 40, 50 of community, okay, and their culture. So maybe Roxanne can share with us.
Through the chair, if I may, to your point, Councilman Wu, we do have a number of cultural type entertainment opportunities and performing groups that these nonprofit organizations, excuse me, community-based organizations help to put together. You know, you did talk about the gospel performances. Ballet Folklorical will be.
Dragon Dance, Lion Dance.
Hula. I'm sorry?
Dragon, Lion.
Dragon, a dragon and a lion.
And the Japanese Taiko, the drum.
You, you got it. All of, all of that and more. We do have some involvement from some of our local schools in the district. So we do have quite a bit that will be part of the entertainment lineup.
So basically showing entire community pitching to perform with all their different, okay, cultures and school student. I think this is going to be a great performance. But okay, and then go to next topic. And I think, okay, I've been chasing the bathroom for month. Okay. And finally, so maybe city manager share with us how, when we got this complete, how much cost us and who did it?
Through the chair, the project was completed last Friday. We needed to send our own in-house crews to some certifications for OSHA safety in confined space, which are required for those type of projects. We wanted to get this done quickly. So our new Deputy Director of Public Works, Charles Alvarado facilitated a very good bid through that process at a cost of $19,000.
$19,000?
Yes, sir.
But last time, the estimation is $98,000.
Got it done for $19,000. And they got in and got out, got it done in a big hurry so we could correct this problem and move forward. So I'd like to.
How long it take, okay, it took to complete? How many days?
Roxanne, I'm going to defer to Rox. I don't know that I remember how many.
You should know.
Days of construction. It might have been a two-day construction.
Two days?
I want to let her confirm that.
I remember last time, me, I talked about two weeks. So, so this is from Roxanne, your Assistant Public Work Director?
Yes, so the Deputy Director, Alvarado, did facilitate that. They began work on Thursday and then concluded Friday morning.
This is, I think it's an excellent job. Okay, is Raul around here? Can Raul, is Raul here?
Unfortunately, he did have to leave. He did have a family obligation. He did stay in the beginning.
You know, we invite him next to the city council and maybe he can kind of address to us how, okay, he can do this, okay, and with $19,000, save the taxpayer $80,000 in the, in the two days. So, okay, and it should be done, okay, a long time ago, okay, we can do this. So this is a capable willingness to do the job. So I want to thank, okay, and Raul, okay, and our new team to coming in to save the day. And, okay, and I know we have a couple of project, including the, okay, and Wood Grove Park, okay, they have a water issue, okay, and now it's kind of nature spring. But the nature spring kind of swamped entire field. Let become a, okay, mosquito infestation, okay.
Maybe we should bottle it and sell it.
Yeah, I think so. Okay. And maybe I would drink it. But I think Raul, okay, and the last time people complained, okay, a week ago, and he, I sent him the text, he show us Sunday and survey the situation and fix Monday with his crew. And he channel the waters, okay. And then right now, I heard about the swamp is dry out. So they channel the, yes, they channel the water into the, okay, and the storm water, okay, so storm drain. So in that way, people can use the park. So yeah, I think this is something we need Raul to kind of come over here. Okay, finally, we have somebody capable to do the job and save the day for the city with cleaning up the park, make our park, okay, for our resident can use. Okay, and then. OK, and then, so I think this is something very important. We have 16 park survey for the capable person to do the job. But so I want to thank Roxanne, OK, and to have her staff, OK, Raul, OK, and to do this. I saw him on the street, OK, fixing the, OK, restaurant row, OK, and over there, right now, look pretty amazing and with a red curve, OK, and it's your male potent district, but it's beautiful right now. And it's showing the city. So again, I just want to, OK, and thank him to to do the job, to do the job.
If we could just go back to Wood Grove just for a moment, and I do want to just to specify and really emphasize that the work that was done by the team, you know, the public service, the public services, public works team, there's still, it is a short-term solution, you know. So we are working on that long-term solution as well. But we do, the the department or the division does recognize its obligation and responsibility to the residents to to provide those solutions so that the space is playable to recreate for the community to enjoy as we work towards that long-term resolution. So I just want to let you know that there's still work that needs to be done, but there is progress being made so that the community can start enjoying that space again.
Thank you, Roxanne. And one more comment I'd like to make about the Spring Festival. I think we should put up big banners on some of our streets, like Azus Avenue, Amar, Glendora, wherever we normally post big banners advertising, you know, community events. I think it's, time is of the essence. So if we could do that, I think that'll help spread the word and any other way we could market it as well.
Absolutely, we can, I'm sorry. Yes, Mayor, we can absolutely do that. And just as an FYI, we did receive confirmation that the schools were, did receive the flyers and were notified so that those did go out. So I wanted to follow up and give you that information as a follow-up from our last city council meeting per your direction.
Thank you. And was that it for the city manager's report?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmody. And that takes us to the consent calendar. Council, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
I would like to pull number seven.
Number seven, OK. Any anything else? Anyone, Councilman Tabataba?
Number three.
Number three. OK. So three and seven are being requested to be pulled. So that will take us, do I have a motion for approving everything but three and seven?
Wait, I will move the motion one, two, four, five, and six.
I'll snap.
Or Pobo.
Did I hear a second?
I'll second.
OK, we got a first and a second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wu to approve consent calendar minus item number three and item number seven, and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. Councilmember Tabataba?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. So that takes us to item number three, Councilman Tabataba.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, a quick question, just because, especially with local emergencies, a lot of residents aren't unsure. So if you could just verbally explain why the necessity to continue the local emergency for the Santa Ana wind emergency we had in January, just just so the the public understands why it's still needed.
Through the chair. As these disasters occur, a system of disaster recovery is afforded local government. We can access money through state Office of Emergency Services, through federal FEMA. We can submit claims for costs incurred related to the damage. With respect to the wind event, we've now submitted a claim for the damages that the city suffered. We lost a major tree on Bideo. It took out a fence on the school district property. They had some expenses for trying to make those right. To this point, I think we're out of pocket cash on that event, including some overtime expenses, about just north of $26,000. I want to get every dollar that we're entitled to under that disaster. Also think in the bigger context, this event is concluding, not only the wind event, but also the larger event. We got some indication from our lobbyists in Sacramento this week that the governor is starting to move away from disaster response, meaning the global pandemic of the COVID. And we will watch that very carefully. This could well be the last time you'll see this on your agenda. I'm going to judge that because I don't want West Covina to miss out on any funding opportunities that might be coming our way. But we might be approaching the end. It'll be a happy moment for all of us.
Thank you. Councilman Tabataba?
Yeah, so so just so the the residents are clear, the reason for that we're continuing this local emergency is because we we haven't received the the monies that we've requested for for the tree damage and and the fence. Is that is that correct?
We're still, yes, through the chair, we're still processing reimbursements for costs incurred. And I don't know if there's anything hanging out there that we haven't submitted yet, but we will. I just want to make sure that the city avails itself of these monies that are properly ours to claim during these kind of events. I've never heard in my career of an emergency lasting for, you know, a couple of years. Usually, it's a couple of days or a couple of months or something. But we'll we'll shut it down as soon as we think the money is about to conclude. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? No, with that, do I have a motion to approve number three?
A motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tabataba and a second by Mayor Protem Diaz for item number three. Councilmember Tabataba?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Item number three passes 5-0. That takes us to item number seven, Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
It's not really a question, it's more of a comment. So at work, we're starting to do our Lotus Festival, and that's big. It has over 100,000 visitors that come through for a two-day weekend. Our fees, I know our two-day vendor fee, it's $500 tomorrow. I have my committee meeting, could be up. But I know West Covina's vendor fees are much less, so thank you. But, you know, when I read this report on the carnival, it was funny because our carnival vendor called me to schedule our carnival for LA. And and this carnival vendor you've chosen is an exceptional one. I remember two years ago, I had to try to find a carnival vendor. I went through the whole list, tried to find. It was difficult to get a carnival vendor. And I had this Palmour, and I utilized them. It was so easy. They take care of the insurance, the paperwork. I know residents asked about insurance. They take care of all of that stuff. You don't even have to pay them. So and I'm glad to see that you can see he's not paying them because I was going to say if they did. So you don't even have to pay them at all. They take care of everything. And the revenue you get from the carnival is amazing for two days weekend. You get thousands of dollars revenue back. So I wanted to say I'm glad that you've chosen Palmour. And I know it's hard to get carnival vendors, but they are a reputable company, and it's actually good to see. And when they called me to do our schedule, I'm like, hey, you're doing West Covina. Like, oh, and so it was just, it was actually nice to see that. And I and I could actually vouch for this vendor. So good job, and yeah, they're good. So thank you.
Can I can I just piggyback on that?
Sure.
It's it's a happy coincidence because, you know, we went through, we contacted five vendors. And I know you understand the struggles with, OK, we contacted five.
Hard.
Two responded, one was actually available, came out and was able to, you know, walk the site, provide amusement. Like, we're not just getting like the leftovers. I want to make that clear. You know, we're getting good attractions and good amusement. So there's value behind that. So, you know, thank you.
And I believe you lucked out because they originally weren't supposed to, but they had a cancellation. So we wouldn't have got any carnivals here if they didn't get a cancellation from another city. So it was just a perfect coincidence.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Do they have a good ride?
Depending on what rides you like. You want to go on the Ferris wheel, you want.
I want everything.
Providing 14.
I want.
They have a variety. Go from seven to 21 rides, but.
Merry Go Around is perfect for me.
They have different types of rides, and adults use it. When I had them come out, I've seen adults and children. So it was, it was really good.
Very good. Yes, I think you would be.
So that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
City manager?
At the risk of prolonging the meeting, I just wanted to say, putting this together in this timeframe has made for a frenzied pace. I'd like to thank Roxanne for her diligence to make all these things happen. We're going to have to cut some checks here between now and the event. And we'll be back to you for ratification on health services. You don't maintain sanitation, your event is in big trouble. Will be one in particular you're going to see on a ratification basis rather than prospectively. But we're we're contracting with well-regarded offices and companies, and I think it'll be a good event as a result of that. I think the carnival revenue will be quite critical.
That one was.
Fiscal success.
Very good.
Councilman Tabataba?
Thank you. And yes, my my family's going, and we're buying the unlimited. Buy your preorder, you're unlimited. So I'm, I am, I am buying five for two days, so 10, I guess. $250, but, you know, we're we're doing it. We're doing it. We're going to ride all the rides. I I think my my only only concern was that they're also going to be selling food. And and we have a lot of food vendors. And just because, like, I obviously, it's costing money, right, to do the rides. But I also want to be able to spend food to to our other vendors. I'm just concerned about them maybe taking some of the the food revenue away. And so I was just wondering.
What they're selling?
Well, what they're selling, but why why also are they being allowed to sell? Like, I understand they're going to make the revenue from the rides, and then also they're going to make revenue from the games, right? So I I guess that was my my one concern, was why they were also being able to sell food.
So to, through the chair, if I may, to answer Councilmember Tabataba's question, what the food that they're selling is like candy apples, cotton candy, and it's like another type of candy that's different than what the other vendors, you know, are selling. You know, we did kind of go back and forth a little bit on the committee level. But at the end of the day, one of the things that we looked at was variety at the food because it it is also a food festival in a sense, too. So adding to that, adding to that variety, again, just different from what some of the other vendors are selling, just different. But, you know, with the carnival comes that concession stand. So we did talk to the groups, you know, the groups, the organizations are representative, really, of the different businesses and food vendors that are coming in. And because we're looking at it as variety rather than competition, we opted to go that direction. I I under, I understand the concern and appreciate where you're coming from.
Yeah.
For the businesses.
Yeah, as a, you know, as a, as a consumer, right? When when it's coming time to food, you know, I have a limited resource. And so I just, just because the other vendors, you know, paid to have their, you know, $400 plus what they had to pay to public health, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the the resources of the customers were not necessarily going to just, you know, kind of slip away. And that that was my big concern. Thank you.
And I agree with Councilmembers Tabataba and I know we, OK, almost of this 60 few vendor coming in, they spend all the effort, OK. And but my understanding is more like a fair few. So just a snack, not the real heavy-duty, the one. Then so so we want to kind of make sure. And if we can get a lot of people show up, OK, and then they can go into, OK, all these vendor, and we just want people to kind of shop, OK, with all these vendor. Hopefully, OK, they can have a very successful revenue, OK. And we want to help the small business, and this is what small business. And they really pay for the permit, they pay for the health department, for county. They they really comply with what the city want, OK. And and they really willing to pay for all these thing, OK. And sometimes some of them is not used to it, but they all pay pay forward. They put the trust in us. So we really need, so have the empty stomach, go to eat all the food, OK. And, OK, right, OK, no eating for two day and eat all the food over there, OK.
Go there fasting.
When.
Lopez Viado.
Thank you. When we actually utilize, they didn't sell food. And at that time, like at my facility, I was wanting them to. But I know they mentioned that they just didn't want to deal with like the health permit and and so forth. So I I do recall that they they didn't sell, like, like you mentioned, like the food. And I think when they did, it was just like water, like water and and candy. But yeah, but it is good to know to make sure that they're not, you know, bringing in food. But I I do recall that they didn't.
And then two, just just one more thought on that. They did also pay for their, went through the same health department process as the other vendors, and they paid those.
Oh, yeah.
Those fees, too.
Cool, thank you. Do I have any further comments or questions?
No. I'll go ahead and motion approve.
All right, we got a first.
I'll second it.
We got a first and a second roll call, please.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado and a second by Mayor Protem Diaz for item number seven. Councilmember Tabataba?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Number seven passes 5-0. That's the end of the consent calendar. Now on to the remaining item of the public hearings, number eight, regarding the fiscal year 2022, 2023 CBGG action plan. And who will present this item? Kelly McDonald. And will the city clerk verify if proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice was given, Mayor.
All right, cool. Then at this time, we'll open the public hearing on this action plan. And first, we'll have the presentation by Kelly McDonald. Then we shall hear comments from the public.
Good evening. This hearing concerns the 2223 Community Development CDBG Block Grant CDBG Action Plan. The city receives an annual grant of CDBG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The program works to ensure decent, affordable housing, to provide services to the most vulnerable in the community, and to create jobs through the expansion and retention of businesses. As a recipient of these funds, the city is required to prepare an annual action plan that guides the intended use of the grant funds. In recent years, the city has used CDBG funds for such activities as the Senior Meals Program, Housing Preservation Program, public services, and the activity shown on the screen. On April 6, 2021, City Council approved the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan based on the prioritization of community needs shown in Table 1. Categories are more fully described in Attachment 1. The priority levels are described in the report and shown in the table on the screen. The action plan development process requires two public hearings. This is the first. Prior to drafting a plan, the city is required to hold a hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the needs and priorities on which the plan is to be based and modify if desired. With the approval of this item, staff can begin drafting the action plan and the process of soliciting proposals and evaluating public service providers of soliciting proposals and evaluating public service providers, as well as possible capital projects. Once the draft is finalized, it'll be made available for a required 30-day public review, then presented to the council for consideration in a public hearing. Notice for the hearing was published on February 18th. No comments have been received. There's no fiscal impact resulting from this report. So it is recommended that the city council direct staff to draft the fiscal year 2022-2023 action plan based on the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan Priorities. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kelly. Are there any questions of staff by our council? No?
Councilman Tabatabai, go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, I know homelessness is a high priority, and we have it listed as high. I did notice, though, there's a disconnect in that we have rental housing as a low priority, which would really be a preventative measure to homelessness. So can you maybe talk a little bit about the rental housing assistance and how that works with CDBG?
Well, the prioritization is just based on whether or not we intend to use the CDBG funds to address that particular need. So we don't have a rental house, we don't have a rental assistance program, so.
Right, so, yeah, so I guess, because homelessness is a high priority, I guess I'm saying, and I don't know how the rest of my council feels about it, but prevention of homelessness is something that should also be maybe even a higher priority to then addressing homelessness, right? Because if you can prevent it, then we don't have to deal with it. And so, again, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but to me, there seems to be a disconnect to have that as a low priority when homelessness is an issue. But I'd like to hear others. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wu?
Oh, go ahead.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
This CDBG, I mean, this is normally gone through the Community and Senior Service Commission, correct? We do that annual CDBG where it goes through.
The public service component is, yes. We receive applications for public service providers, and there's an ad hoc committee that reviews those here's presentations and makes recommendations on funding.
Okay. And I, so for these are just pretty much the homes issue, correct? Because I know the CDBG, the other CDBG fundings that they do, it goes to organization that targets even homelessness and so forth on that. But on this case, with, like, the economic development, the homeless owner occupied housing, I know those that currently have, how do I put this, the, sorry, the, those who currently have the housings in place, let's say that they move in, they have situation with their AC unit, their heating, they go through this CDBG, correct?
There is a housing rehab program that they could apply for. So, yes, it's all the same funding, just different activities under the same umbrella.
And then with this, is there certain usage to be able to, I mean, to be able to utilize, like, for example, the rental housing, when you would, if they prioritize that high, it's that's just more like funding for the rental?
Well, yes. In terms of, again, the priority level assigned here is just whether or not we're, the city plans to use CDBG money or not. The council can reprioritize these at any time. Rental housing thing, maybe the city would explore creating a rental housing program or contracting a nonprofit to conduct that and sub-granting some money out to them to conduct it, if that's what you'd like to see.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I know we, I went through this many, many, many times, okay? And before, always, the concern is how we help the fixed-income people, okay, use the CDBG fund to renovate their home. But like the councilwoman talking about, okay, to upgrade their living standard, because they have no insulation, no air conditioning. In 1989, when I moved in West Covina, my first home, okay, I purchased 235-lit, has no air condition, no insulation, single panel window, and so that is really waste of energy. So I think this, okay, and the CBGG fund can, okay, loan, okay, into the fixed-income senior, because we still have a lot of senior and a lot of fixed income, they've been West Covina, need some kind of, okay, upgrade, update of their house with all this so-called, okay, double-panel window, air-conditioned, energy-saving, because otherwise, no matter how you pump, okay, the gas, the heater, there's no insulation, the heat still, okay, went away. So, and another thing is CDBG fund, okay, basically, and doing the so-called homeless voucher, right? I think we use the CDBG fund, we pay the station union, okay, when they know, because last time they told me, they're getting to apply, so we have to reimburse, okay, to pay, use the CDBG fund to pay for the some hotel, that's my understanding. I think Polina, you told me that, or somebody told me that, we using, we still using the federal HUD CDBG fund to pay for some of the, okay, motel voucher.
Uh, no, that's not, that's not accurate.
Not accurate? Not accurate. So how we utilize to pay for some motel for some homeless willing to get into shelter, okay, how we, or some people, okay, a family get evicted, okay, and we need to find a housing for them and temporarily put them into hotel, okay, who, where we get a fund for that?
Measure H money was used for that. We had Measure H money granted to us, and that's what.
We can apply, and they will pay for that?
I'm sorry.
Okay, for example, my understanding, that school called me, they said, we have a family possible will be, okay, homeless with the children, and then we say, hey, hurry up, let's help them. So if we wanna move them into the hotel, well, how we get the money? Where is the money?
Well, previously, that was Measure H money. We don't have that many any longer.
I understand. So right now, if somebody want to go to the housing, we have no money to help them to temporarily housing?
That's correct.
Okay, so, but can we?
We could use.
Can we use the CDBG fund?
Right.
Can we move up, okay, to using some of the fund? How much we can use to help people now on the street, especially with children?
Hmm.
Because I receive from the school from time to time about this issue, this teacher calls, say, hey, we might have a family in trouble. So can we help them temporarily? Do we have, can we use the CDBG fund? Can we prioritize some of, because look like this issue won't go away, and we don't get the Major H money, then we maybe find some other resource, so possible, can you CDBG? And how much we can use?
Yes. HUD hasn't let us know what the allocations are for the current year.
How much we can use our budget from the CDBG fund? How much we can utilize to help the family in trouble?
I'd have to take a look at what's available. We've obligated all the money for.
Hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand for this year? Do we have a number for that? Since I see you for six times, this number seven times, so we, although every year CDBG fund, we should have some number, but because of my understanding, always, sometime we use CDBG fund to help the people in trouble.
Right. The homeless, the homeless programs fall under the public service cap, and that's capped at 15% of the grant. That's a statutory thing, and we typically obligate those fully to.
Okay, Carrie, Kelly, if we tonight, we want to change the priority, prioritize some of the fund, how much we can prioritize for helping the people potentially in trouble so we can get a grant to help them now on the street? Because when they're on the street, they're, okay, in the car, they're way too late. We want to, before they go in the car on the street, we want to maybe find some housing, motel temporarily for them.
The prioritization we're looking at tonight is for the next, for the next cycle.
I understand.
We don't know what money is available at this time, because HUD hasn't announced that.
So we have no, we cannot change the homeless, the grant, based on what you say? I'm just confused. You want us to approve this with which one is a priority? Then we talk about, potentially, maybe we can use some of the money paid for some people if we have family, children, they're in trouble. Can we using, or, before, my priority is always using the CDBG fund to help people, and this already in the program, to help people to upgrade, update their home. Now, my understanding, we have some grant to help people to temporarily housing, okay, pay for their motel, but you told me, no, this is a major age, but you know it, we have no major money, Major H money from county. So if we want to help people right now, we have, do what we can use, can we changing the, okay, CDBG fund over here, or we can prioritize some of the fund, okay, implementing to temporarily housing for the family in trouble with children? Can we do that? No?
Are we uncertain about that as of today, or do we need more time?
We need to research, bring back.
I'll research that and.
You bring back, okay, maybe, because otherwise, how can we decide?
Yeah, there's just some good questions, so let's hold that thought. Definitely, we need to research that. And Councilman Tabatabai had a question.
Thank you, mayor. Right, so I think Councilman Wu was really getting to the issue that I originally was talking about, is right now, we don't necessarily have an avenue for families that might be struggling and might go into homelessness to be able to access support from the city. And I know rental housing, right, which we have a low priority, which means it isn't gonna get CDBG money, right? And so that's why I'm requesting that we do actually look to create that rental housing assistance program to keep people from entering that. So when a city council member gets a call from a school district that says, hey, we have a family that is about to be evicted from their apartment, is there any avenue for that family to get maybe assistance for that one-month rent to keep them housed? So that way, they can, you know, firm up their situation before they're in the car, right? That we've created that, just like we have done for, you know, the air conditioning and the, right? And so, because we don't have that rental assistance program, we haven't put any CDBG money in it, but CDBG money would be eligible for a program like that. And so I think, yes, for us, for you to bring us back what that could look like, and possibly how much money we could actually have in there, and how many families that might help so we can prevent the homelessness, I think would be extremely beneficial for us to make a really good decision on our plan for the next couple of years.
So if I can add to that or respond, so the purpose of this evening is to get the priorities from the council, where you guys want to prioritize. We will come back with an action plan. So we heard you loud and clear, you guys want us to look at a rental housing program. As mentioned, just because it's low priority doesn't mean that you can't fund those programs, so.
So I'm hearing that we want to elevate that status, and I agree with my fellow council members, we gotta have some sort of ready plan for someone finding themselves in that situation. And Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Thank you, mayor. I believe there is one city that is currently doing this, but I'm not sure if it's through CDBG, but I know that they have it to the residents that if they just lost their job or struck in by illness, where they just, the city will pay like one month of their rent, their utilities, just to get by while they're, you have to file the paperwork, EDD and all that stuff, just to get by. If I get, find out which city it is, I'll let you know, but you can look at that as well, but that is in consensus what all my council colleague has been saying, so thank you.
Yes, I believe Elmonte has a program like that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Was there, Kelly, anything else in the presentation, or did that cover everything?
I did want to mention that Councilmember Wu's question about the loans, that staff is revising those guidelines for the loan program and looking to increase the loans and expand the uses.
Councilman was a bit outdated.
And, yeah, we need to increase, okay, because right now, everything's so expensive.
It's only like one AC unit.
Yeah, we need to increase the amount, and plus, we need to promote, okay? We need to tell people, we have this program, the fixed income, the senior, they can use the money to upgrade their living standard, because some of them is sub-living standard with all this, okay, air-conditioning issue is sometimes really, really hot, okay? So see what we can help them. And then another issue is about homeless assistance, okay, or some rental assistance program. I think that is, okay, I've been receiving as a council about the issue, the school called me, say, hey, do you have a program? And I called the city, city say, okay, and we might have, at times, a union station, okay? But now, union station never show up to tell us what they want to do, so we can have a contract, okay? So we don't know, so maybe we have to talk to the, okay, and our police department, which, okay, agency they trust, so we can maybe bring them, see we can find, okay, the partnership. But tonight, do we have urgency to vote this tonight, or can we bring back next meeting, tell us why you find out how much we can allocate into the rental system, how much we can utilize that, so we know, make a set of the program, okay, to help people to, before they're on the street?
I think this just sets the direction, right? But we.
Correct.
Bring something back that's specific to everything we're requesting.
So once we know how much the city is going to be allocated, then we can come back and say, this is how we're proposing to spend the monies, and that's when you can say, we want to spend more here, we want to spend less over, on these programs.
So then, for just on the planned priorities, all we need to change is on the rental housing, change the low to high, just for this.
I think so, I think they change it to high.
Well, then, I would like to move the, yeah, rental housing, that, accept this, but just.
Yeah, so I think we have consensus on that, but we still have to see if anyone from the audience wishes to comment on this item. Anybody?
You can just fill out a card later, if you would. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Welcome. Hi. I'm really glad all of you are discussing this, because this is something many of us have been concerned with for a little over two years. Councilmember Tabatabai is correct. If we can prevent homelessness by keeping people in their apartments, in their homes, you don't have such a big homeless problem. There are, the only thing that is now being offered because of the housing shortage is to refer people to Housing is Key. Housing is Key has this much space. The need is this great. So I think one of the things that would really help in the housing element would be to critically look at it, look at what the resources are in the city. A voucher for 30 days is better than nothing. What happens after 30 days? Okay? One city that I worked with or had a discussion with, with school-age kids locally has 700 homeless children. Okay? Those are kids that attend school within their district, and many of them don't live there because they've been evicted with their families. Same happens with West Covina. Okay? I spoke with someone from West Covina. What's happening is, as people are being evicted, they're living in cars, they're living in other cities on couchers, they're stacking three and four families in a home, and they're bringing their children to school. As a city, we can do better. Every city can do better than that. Okay? So I applaud you for acknowledging this. Anything having to do with housing has to be the highest priority. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other speakers? Anyone else who'd like to comment?
I have no speakers.
Okay, so just the one speaker. So I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and continue with council discussion. Councilwoman Lopez Viado, is there something you wanted to say?
Yes, and I remember when the union station was here, the homeless, we mentioned about, like, the Housing Key, their Key Housing, but I've requested that they expand it, because I know a lot of residents want to help, but where they can utilize that instead of, it's only geared to, like, a hotel or apartment, but even like the rooms, so families can take the rooms and stuff. I put in that request, I don't know if they've done that, but if city staff can follow up on that, whether they can just expand that.
Details of how that would work?
Yeah.
Yeah. To clarify how that works, basically, okay, so if I have a family, I get a call and someone says, we're being evicted, we've been handed our 30-day notice, our 60-day notice, first thing we do is say, connect with Housing is Key, because there are attorneys there. Okay? No one should go before a judge or self-evict without representation. With the representation, many times, we can keep them in their homes or apartments two or three more months, which gives time for the other programs to take effect. That's what we're trying to do, okay? But the difficult part is, there is a lack of housing. That's, it's a lack of housing. And then I think the other thing is probably profit before people. There is no rent control in the state of California, which means that every. There is no rent control in the state of California, which means that every time someone moves out of an apartment, that landlord can increase the rent. The group of people or the population typically that's targeted, single mothers, African Americans. African Americans make up only 8%, 10% of the population of the state of California. They are 30% of the homeless population. How is that possible? So one of the things that I think needs to happen in every city, there has to be some kind of rent stabilization, there need to be ordinances, things need to be written into the housing element to protect people, because a lot of this is just greed.
All right, so we'll look into the details of what can be done related to connecting people who have rooms for rent. Any other comments from the council?
I'm going to move the motion to approve, okay, and then to change the homeless.
Priority to higher.
Priority to higher. Okay, and that is my motion.
I'll second.
Call please.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wu with a request to change the homeless to a higher priority. And I have a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado. Councilmember Tabatzaby?
Just for clarification, that should have been the rental housing to the higher priority?
Yes, that was, you're correct, that was.
Noted, thank you.
Long words chosen.
Rental housing to a higher priority, thank you. Councilmember Tabatzaby?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
And Kelly, okay, you have to bring back the action plan, right? Tell us how much money, okay, next time, okay, see how can we utilize, implement this, if we can get a grant to help people. Okay, thank you, and my answer is yes.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Castellanos?
Aye. That's a 5-0 with the direction given to city staff. Thank you for the presentation. And that moves us to number 10. That's Departmental Regular Matters, Consideration of Transport and Lease Agreement with MV Transit. City manager, who will present the report?
Good evening, mayor and council members. So the item before you is Considered Transportation Lease Agreements with MV Transit. MV Transit is our current provider for our shuttle services and our Dial-A-Ride program. And per the last agreement, they were contracted to do a Uber pilot program for senior citizens in the community. The contract with MV Transit was extended on a month-to-month basis for a total of up to one year. That will end March 2nd, or expire March 2nd, 2020, which will be tomorrow. The city is currently in the process of doing a transit service evaluation for the community. That evaluation will be presented to the city council at the March 15th council meeting. From that direction from council, that will inform staff that we have to go out for requests for proposals. So to ensure services through the end of the evaluation period and the RFP process, staff asked MV to provide a proposal for a month-to-month extension. The attachment is a proposal at a status quo service level, and the rates would increase by 5.7% to keep it as status quo. The lease would be, or the extension would be for six months on a month-to-month basis, and that would include both the shuttle service and the Dial-A-Ride. There is also an option to modify the current services being provided to reduce the cost of the contract. Our consultant looked at two alternatives, eliminating the blue line and reducing service on the green line from two buses to one. Each alternative would be anticipated to save approximately $9,000 per month. So the city also has a lease agreement for MV Transit at the City Yard. That's also on a month-to-month and also expires tomorrow. The city does receive $3,000 per month for the lease agreement. So before you are various options. We would like the council to provide staff direction. Option one would be to provide an extension for the existing agreements for transit services as is, including the Dial-A-Ride program and the pilot Uber program on a month-to-month basis for not to exceed six months. The second option would be to approve an extension of the existing agreements for transit services and the lease on a month-to-month basis, also not to exceed six months, and direct staff to conduct contract directly with Uber or Lyft to carry out the on-demand ride-hailing program. The third option is to provide an extension of the existing agreements for transit services with reduced services, whether we eliminate the blue or eliminate the blue line altogether or reduce the green line service, and do the lease on a month-to-month basis as well, or provide alternative direction. These would be approximately the cost for the different options. So the cost for option one is $740, and that, this is on a six-month extension basis. Option two would be a reduction to $690,000, and option three would be a reduction to $636,000. So tonight, staff is seeking council direction on the transit services and the lease agreement and the Uber pilot program, and to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary documents in such final form as approved by the city attorney to carry out the city council's direction.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
So why would we vote on this tonight when the discussion is that the evaluation will be presented at the March 15th city council meeting?
Ideally, we would love to extend it until the March 15th, but the contract with MV Transit does expire March 2nd.
And we can't continue with the month-to-month?
This is why we're asking for council direction.
Oh.
So to answer that, I don't think the results on March 15th will really be any kind of material benefit to us. And I've looked at this, as you've all heard me say, for years, since I've been on this council, I'm tired of looking at these empty ghost buses, and I've requested time and time and time again for something to be done. I don't think I've ever been taken seriously. So option number four I'm going to propose is to terminate all the fixed routes in their entirety, keep Dial-A-Ride, keep the lease, and engage with the saved money directly with Uber and Lyft. So that's what I would like to propose. So let Councilwoman Lopez Viado answer your question. I don't think the results on March 15th will really be meaningful. And I think it's time we take decisive action on really giving a benefit to our residents from these monies, from 2.1 million from Prop A, 1.8 million from Prop C, 1.3 million from Mezrar, 1.5 million from Mezrem. We're wasting it on ghost buses. From now to the 15th, really nothing changes, other than I keep seeing that same little ghost bus driving past me every morning on the way to work, entirely empty, and every single other bus I drive by, entirely empty. And I've asked all of you here and everyone that I encounter, please tell me if you ever see a head in one of those buses. I never, ever, ever do. So that's my stance. That is, again, I'll reiterate, the option I'd like to propose would be to completely conclude our fixed route system in favor of using those funds for something that our residents would really utilize, such as other cities like Monrovia do, $3 subsidized to anywhere in the city. Our businesses in town could really benefit from that. Our mall, for example, instead of having the parking lot full of cars, could have people at the mall for a subsidized rate and still allow people from out of town to see an empty parking lot, stop and shop. So that is my motion, to conclude the fixed routes, keep Dial-A-Ride, because I think our elderly do use that to get around, so I don't want to take anything away that's being utilized, I just want to conclude what's not being utilized. Councilman Tabatzaby?
Thank you, Mayor. I think my major concern, I mean, my mom does use the fixed route to go get my son, and there are families that do depend on the fixed route, especially for school. So I do think that to eliminate the fixed route while school is still going on is problematic. I can see during the summer months, when that fixed route is not utilized by, again, families picking up their kids from school or school age riders. And, you know, that also residents who do use it have an understanding, hey, in June, maybe, you know, by June, this is going to be done, so now you can start preparing for a different service.
I see that as an option, now I want to ask you something.
Yes.
Would, and that's, you know, good, first, or you might have mentioned that to me, but that's very rare. When I've requested this kind of data from MV Transit, the data that I was given was a joke, to be frank. You may recall what it looked like, it was a chart that was meaningless, kind of offensive, to be honest. Would your mom, when your children be open and comfortable utilizing Uber? Because that would fulfill that need and save us a ton of money and really open up the ability for all of our residents to really enjoy transportation.
No, yeah, no, and my mom and son occasionally use Uber too. You know, Uber is actually quite expensive. I mean, you know, now, obviously, this is going to be subsidized, but, you know, for, you know, we live off of Merced and Meker, we don't live very far from Orange Wood Elementary. It's like $18, $22 to take an Uber.
Right, it is expensive. Post-pandemic, the price has shot up certainly, but I still would rather see with a subsidy, not having our residents pay 18 bucks, but something that's not as much.
Right, and I can see that, and that, and I just, I just think to give, you know, some forewarning for families who do kind of rely on it currently, you know, the, this is what we're, you know, just a transition period, you know, this seems.
Point taken. I know I want to move fast because I've been on this for so long. Councilman Wu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I totally understand your frustration, okay? I saw a lot of empty buses driving around, okay? But in another token, okay, I was at the senior center, I see, okay, they transfer people over there with senior, with some disability people, and I talked to them, I say, how do you think, do you want to change your route? So I understand the frustration, okay? But at the same time, we see some of the population, they still needing this, but to overhaul, okay, and to reform is needed, okay? I 100% agree with you. So my suggestion is, rather than, okay, we could give them a warning and say, we are going to terminate this if you are not going to change. But we're still waiting for the report coming out. At the same time, we give the suggestion, how we change the route, that would be more useful for the population? And or is that possible, we can change it more kind of open, like a trolley style? Is it any possible it will take too much money? Or how can we change into, like last time I say, make it more convenient, safe, and hip, like people willing to take the bus?
All those things. And I agree, I agree with that. My frustration stems from, I've asked for all that. I've asked MV Transit, give us that data, like what you just mentioned, that you've witnessed, you've witnessed people using it. That's what I've asked for, and they haven't given it to us.
Yeah, I understand, 100% agree with you, okay? And, you know, we went through the how to reform, it take time, sometimes very frustrating. You saw me how I pulling my hair, because I was like, okay, telling city manager how the concern about the street, about the park, but due to the personnel and the bureaucracy, and we have to, okay, and rather than possible job, and then some other innocent, they need to use it.
True.
Yeah, so my suggestion is, let's take a transportation action plan, okay, and thoroughly discuss, okay, and see how can we work with, okay, company, this company, do we have any other company that we can, okay?
That will actually listen to our request to provide routes that are meaningful?
Yeah, yeah.
Which is what I've been asking for.
So maybe we can give to some, okay, there's, okay, suggestion, okay, what we can do, okay, give to some deadline, okay, and is that serious? So from there, at the same time, we see how can we, okay, improve? If not, then we have no choice, okay? Then we have no choice to kill it, okay? By the same time, I think we should, okay, give some warning shot, okay, and to the resident, okay, and see how their input, okay? And then we don't want them waiting on the bus stop and.
Yeah, definitely, we don't want that. Yeah, and I agree with that.
Pretty scary about that.
My goal is to provide our public with.
Understand, understand. And I think, Mr. Mayor, I think 100% agree with you. I agree with you, the waste of money, see the ghost buses running around, and it's very frustrating, especially gas prices so high right now.
Exactly.
Okay, and you don't utilize, and you see the taxpayer money go down through the drain. 100% okay, agree with you, but I think we, before we do such a drastic change, and that gives you some warning.
We'll give them one more chance, again, after so many.
Hey, how many times we give our city manager chances, okay?
Yeah, how many warning shots does it take? But let's continue. Do Councilwoman Lopez Viado, any comments?
Okay, I do agree that the fixed route needs to be changed, since obviously, the last time that they looked at it was pre-development of a lot of high priority areas that people go to now. The shuttles, I know, especially the teenagers who can't drive, I need, I would like them for them to be able to go from the school directly to the community center or the sportsplex. You know, now that we're utilizing the sportsplex, we should have a dedicated shuttle that goes there constantly from a parking area, wherever that may be, and everyone knows that's the parking, that's a designated shuttle that routes every 15 minutes, especially on weekends, so we can dissolve that parking issue.
Exactly, I agree. That's what I'm looking for, is routes that will actually be used.
Yes, and that's exactly what I've requested before, and that's why I was thinking that the January, I mean, the March 15th is what they're going to present. I was thinking that they're going to present us like the new routes or whatever it may be, because I don't know what, I mean, that was from the last meeting, all of us shared the same frustration, believe me, I completely agree. But, yeah, that's what I wanted to say, I know.
Thank you. Councilman Tabatzaby?
Yeah, and I was also, you know, and, you know, talking about just cross-cities, you know, and just driving by the Baldwin Park train station, you know, is there, is there a way that we actually can have a shuttle going from that Baldwin Park train station that takes us to our West Covina Plaza Mall, that takes to the sportsplex, right? Because now, if you have people from other cities who take that train, they get dropped off right there in Baldwin Park, I mean, it's literally just, you know, down the block, and now you have this route that is going right on the hour, dropping people off at our plaza, dropping off people at the sportsplex, things like that. And so that would also be something that I'd want to make sure is part of any transportation plan.
Councilman Wu?
I think the city management need to give us a transportation action plan. I think we asked about that before, how we connect with the full here transit, how we go to synchronized traffic, you know, we've been requested for four, five years already, okay? And that people can encourage people to utilize mass transportation, because it's much easier, faster to go through it, because every time they hit on the Azusa, they will become green light. So encourage people and connect with GoLine on Azusa, and connect with Metrolink at Covina, and then they can go south to the 60. So kind of move people around with, so the design is how we utilize, okay, and the city, okay, with mass transportation, and with, okay, go west, okay, or all this, okay, so how it would be easier route, that popular route that people can use.
Will use.
Can go to, let me finish, okay, please, okay, can go to the school, okay, go to the park, and go to the shopping mall, can go to the sportsplex, okay? How can we make it, and this is, they should kind of tell us, okay, how we can kind of connect. And this is, they should kind of tell us, okay, how we can kind of connect together is a transportation action plan of West Covina. I think we've been asking this for.
Long time.
Long time. But we never really get anything, okay, and that we can really, okay, discuss, because nothing happened, and then we got frustrated and want to cure everything. So, but really, I understand, because nothing changed, okay? And this is what we want to change, okay? Something that can be more easier, and we talk about three things. How to make it safer, how to make it convenient, and how to make it more hip, okay? And see, what's their proposal, telling us what they can do, okay, and change the route and make it popular, okay, make it more utilized, rather than a waste of.
Rather than ghost buses.
Exactly. Okay, and this is my request, is city can tell us when, when we're going to get this transportation action plan? Yes, what? Any answer? Dave, you look at me like I'm a stranger.
Well, the March 15 council meeting.
Going to get the action plan, Dave?
I was just going to say at the March 15 council meeting, a lot of the questions that you're proposing about connecting to the metro, even possibly connecting to the Gold Line, moving students around from schools to community centers, and music to my ears about bringing people to our shopping centers, definitely want to make that easy and convenient for people. So that's going to be part of the presentation that we bring to the council on the 15th.
So if March 15, they're going to bring in, hopefully, good, okay, good plan, okay? And we can kind of, okay, see what their proposal, okay? And what tonight we can do to kind of give them a little bit time so we can get at least almost there.
Well, I think we're all kind of, everyone, I think, sees what my frustration is and why. So then I'll amend my motion to consider option three, but still with a bigger vision of, we just got to do better for our residents. I'm tired of seeing ghost buses. I'd rather see that wasted money go to subsidize Ubers and Lyft, or anything that's used better routes, as discussed today. Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
So my thing, I know we're hitting on this MV transportation, is why are we only limited to MV?
Exactly.
Transportation? Can March 15, you bring in other transportation so that we have another option? I'm sorry?
Like someone who cares about these requests we've been making?
Exactly. Somebody, you know, who's not complacent to thinking, okay, sure, yes, we'll do this, but it takes forever. Because I've pushed for this, what, last year, the year before, and it's still the same, and I get all bunch of excuses. But if we can add, you know, okay, there's all these other transit vendors that are interested, that is willing to take over, I'd like to see that. Can we also include that on the March 15?
The March 15 isn't specific to MV Transit providing transit services. So it's in general doing alternative routes, shuttle routes, providing different services, but it's not specific with MV as a vendor. So if, depending on the direction council provides, we could do a request for proposals for transit services.
I think that will be the direction we move in, but pending what, you know, what we just discussed tonight, I'm comfortable with sticking to option three for now, but with the vision in mind to move towards an RFP.
I have a.
Councilman Wu.
I have a question. So do we have an option? Do we have other company? Do we have a?
Well, I think we, would we need an RFP for?
Do we have other carrier that, okay, so we can see their proposal? If this company doesn't want to work with us, or with any other company, they willing to give a proposal? Because we.
I would love that.
We need to provide transportation.
Absolutely.
So we just need to find the one company willing to work with us, okay, and give some attention to.
Service to our.
Service and see, and really, that's into their difficulty, because I want to get the benefit of the doubt, because the pandemic, okay, nobody want to take the bus for 2020 and 2021. And now suddenly coming back, so people more feel more safe, okay, comfortable to sit into the confined, okay, space. So by the same time, we want to see what they can help us, okay, to have a better route. So do we have other company, okay? This is the only company they're willing to provide the service?
Not at all. I think once we present to you guys on the 15th and we get direction, if it is to provide a shuttle services, then we can do an RFP for a different shuttle service provider and go from there. And maybe we don't even have to, depends, maybe, as Mayor was saying, maybe we use all the funds toward subsidizing Uber or Lyft rides within the community. So really, will depend on.
Not everybody use Uber. I don't use Uber, okay? I know my kids say I'm crazy because I don't like to use Uber. I drive myself, okay? But a lot of people, they not necessarily download the app, okay, this and that. But a lot of seniors, okay, they not using that. So we need to accommodate all different level of population.
Once again, it'll all be based on council's direction.
And I think, I think the dialer ride will continue.
Dialer ride is good.
For them.
Yes.
Yeah. Councilman Tabatway, was that?
I just, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. You know, I understand the frustration, but to reduce service, I think, again, kind of puts an undue burden. So I mean, I would like us to go with one of the options that doesn't reduce service, but since it's month to month, we can obviously, after the 15th, you know, say, okay, you know what, this is going to last just one more month, and then we're moving in a different direction. That way, the residents who do use it don't feel any sacrifice, but we're also not tied into anything really long term, right? And so that way, the transition can be smooth, and there is no, oh, what did you do? You know, why, why am I not getting my bus at the time I normally get it? You know, now I have to wait another hour.
And I agree with that, except for, I've been asking for the longest time, get me that data. Does anyone hop on from here to here? Or here to here? And mum's the word, because it's not in their interest to tell us that.
No, and, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just, I think to, you know, to reduce service, when we don't necessarily know how it will impact certain communities, certain families. When I don't think, when I don't think we have to now, like, I think, again, we can transition it, we can create a way better plan, and then people just transition right into our better plan, and their lives never change, except for the better, right? You know, so I don't necessarily think that, that we need to, right, reduce the service, you know, when, when we are going to transition into something better. That's, that's my opinion and my thoughts.
You, Councilman Wu.
How long to get, okay, in March 15, we can get the proposal from the, about consultant, right? It's not, and how soon we can get RFP from other carriers, so we can know who's going to give a proposal, how long it's take? So in that way, we can see, okay, and so we don't want to erupt right away, shut down everything, but at least we, we can kind of.
Transition smoothly.
Transition smoothly.
In option, option three, how did we come up with the routes that would be cut under option three? Do we have data that supports that, you know, those are the, you know, is that finally the answer I've been looking for, you know?
Sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead. I mean, that's, because I agree with my council colleagues, but the reason I chose three, I'm assuming, because I've never been told, even though I've been asked for so, such a long time, what are the routes we can cut? Because I can tell you without equivocation, every morning when I go to work, empty, every single time. I know we could cut at least that portion of the route, or reallocate it somewhere else, whatever works. But how, back to my question, how do we come up with the cuts that would occur under option three?
So option three, we talked to the consultant that's working with us to do the evaluation for transit services. There's two options. We can reduce the blue line, which is the least, has the least ridership, and these are, I know you don't like the data, but this is the data that we've been provided. The green line does have the higher ridership. It does have two shuttles on that route. So based on ridership, we can reduce the blue line to make it equitable. We could reduce one of the green shuttles. We can also reduce the hours on any one of those shuttles as well.
If we move forward on one of these options, month to month, I'd like to request as part of this new month to month agreement, that I want to demand that we get this data. No more Mickey Mouse reports like we've been given. I want good data.
So you want to know who's getting on and off at each stop?
And times, yeah. We'd like to know what times people are riding. That way, we, if we do reduce, we reduce when people aren't using it.
I mean, look at this chart. This is what we've been provided. This is offensive. This is unbelievable that this is being presented to us. Honestly, I'm offended. Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, this is like, we're kindergartners. That's what, that's what we're being given. You guys know where I stand.
Do we have the rep from them, okay, to, in the council chamber? No, yes?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Maybe you can talk to us.
Good evening, Albert Mayor.
Hi again.
Ms. Mary Vice President for MV Transportation. I was before you the last time, and as you guys know, for the last two years, we've been plagued with the pandemic, and ridership has suffered as a result of that on the fixed route and the dialer ride. We've provided data to, to staff based on the request that we've received for data. And so this is the information you have before you. Also, over last year, the council approved to have a consultant to work with us in order to pull together the presentation you're going to have that on the 15th. And we've worked with them, giving them information, provided information through this process to bring a adjustment to services or recommendations to you. So it's not that we've been complacent with what you've asked us to do over the last two years with COVID and the reduction, when school was not even in operation, of trying to get what we consider consistent data on ridership, you know, was a challenge because people weren't necessarily riding during that time. So as you look at the recommendations, know as things are coming back, things are opening up, these options may or may not be something you would want to consider, because what's happened over the last two years is not representative of what the future may hold on the service as well, because of the challenges with a COVID ridership, school closings, you know, issues along those lines. So we are not a complacent company. We've been your partner for many years, but the last two years, there's been impacts on getting what I consider data for the future on how you want to operate your service. So those are my, my comments there. We appreciate working with you for many, many years now, and we're just trying to move through this process. It's been a challenge for everyone the last couple of years, and the data reflects on that. But we are here to be your partner as we move forward. The month to month option, like someone said here, you do have an option to, as you decide what you want to do, you're not locked into a long term contract with us, so that once you decide the direction you want to go, we can move forward with that. But to, I would like to say, just to cancel services beginning tomorrow, when we would have to provide warrant notices to our employees who are union employees, and then obviously the public, with any changes in services generally require public hearings and things of that nature for the public to let them know it's going to be coming down the pike. So I just wanted to add those comments to you tonight. Thank you.
And I, so would you be committed to doing what I ask? Because last year, I asked for more data than that. So that's where my frustration stems from, is that I've been asking for this for years. I agree that the challenges of the pandemic are unpredictable and difficult on everyone. But I also see that as the opportunity now to, more than ever, to ask these tough questions.
Right.
Make your company more valuable by way of doing what I'm asking. If, if the buses were full, I wouldn't be saying a word. And so that's all I'm asking for, is let's use brain cells. Let's use all resources available. Let's use the drivers to give us the data. Let us know it works. I just, I'm tired of seeing empty buses, I think.
And during, I believe, during the course of this evaluation, as working with the consultant, some of those, those very things you're referring to has been happening and done. That's, that's the basis of the report you're going to get on the 15th. So some of this, this has been happening. This is a, the ridership, you know, detailed by month, by route, to determine which routes are productive and are not, and what needs to potentially change. But there's been more, you'll see in the consultant's report, more detailed information that we worked with them to, to help them with the data, to pull the report that they're providing to you on the 15th.
So if we move forward, would you be able to get, get us more detailed data, including riders on, riders off, from one stop to next stop and so on?
Yes, and that, the, as I look backwards, I'll have to check with our accounting department, our finance folks, and how we work, we record ridership. But I can commit as of tomorrow, you will, we'll start making sure that data is collected. And I believe during the course of this review, some of that kind of data was looked at, I believe, with the consultant, on, ons and off, areas of the routes. But yes, you have a commitment for that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any more questions? Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Thank you, Mayor. So that data would have a complete breakdown on time, days, weeks, and so forth, correct?
Yes. What I'll get with, I'll send to Kelly, what I understand your request is for the, for the data, to make sure we're capturing what you're asking for. I anticipate it's going to be the time of day, the actual stops, the ons and off at the stops, that we pick up and drop off on, that kind of data going forward, we can provide that information to you.
Might even be a good time to ask, you know, when, when the bus is empty and then someone hops on, that might be the time to ask, hey, you know, I noticed people don't get on from here to here. What do you think would be more beneficial if we took a different route or?
Yeah, and you'll see, I believe, and when you pull the report on the 15th, there was a lot of interviews, because our drivers know a lot, right? They're out there every day, so they're, they're, they're resource as well, but along with the public. But you'll see some of that information in the next report.
Hey, Councilman Wu.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, and so the question, on March 15, we will have more data.
Yeah, the data will, will be handled by staff and the consultant.
Yeah.
That was, that is actually bringing forth.
That'll be great, okay. And then we have, do we have some data regarding the new route? Okay, how to kind of move people around?
I'll let, I'll let the staff speak to that. I know what the options are, but they have more of the detail on what they're, what the.
So I think, sorry, I got the spider web. Okay, so, so what I'm, okay, I think we try to find the ways, utilize the service, don't waste the, okay, the empty buses, okay, and the gasoline, the manpower, running around empty. And so can we find out some more popular, okay, more demand route, okay? So what is suggestion from, from the city and from your company? Okay, we're not trying to bash you, we just try to find a solution.
No, I understand, I understand.
And we want the data, okay, and we want the route, okay? We want to, how can let people to utilize senior, okay, person, okay, not old enough to drive, okay, or people just doesn't want to drive and can utilize, move people around. So can we have those route and suggestion and data and provide for council, okay? And then we make a decision, okay? Is that possible, March 15, you have all those information for us?
Now, unfortunately, I will not have the data on, you're saying, on the breakdown of who's riding, you know? I think we have adults, chil, seniors and.
No, I think I'm more, my side more interested to the new route, okay? I think new routes, my, how they, the past, I don't care. I'm more.
Right, okay. Actually, the consultant who, who put together the recommendations, who, they vetted them, we met with them, and they presented those things, changes to us, but the city has the details on what those core options are that can answer that question more clearly than I can.
Mayor and Councilman Wu, so the consulting group, IBI, is collecting data not only from MV Transit, but foothill transit, and really analyzing the routes that are most used and how to be connecting our services with the existing services provided. And so that, they'll be presenting that information on the 15th.
And then, okay, regarding the buses, can we change, is it possible, do you have any other different style of the buses?
You mentioned the trolley.
Yeah.
And that's something, and with, by this being the month to month, with, with the plan to go out to RFP, you can let, you know, us and any bidder know what kind of bus what kind of bus you're looking for because we would have to obviously price whatever changes we're going to make, new buses or trolley style bus that's more, you know, like you indicated, more.
Because it's kind of open, people maybe feel more safe to take. So we increase the ridership.
Yes.
And another thing is a little bit more hip. People say, hey, let me hop in. So something to attract people to kind of hop in, okay, to utilize the service.
Yes, and I think basically, the staff is gathering that kind of information. So when they go to RFP, they will know what the city is, you know, everyone will know what the city is requesting and looking for so we can plan accordingly.
So basically, we need to know what we want and what route we want. And then we send the IP, okay? And in the meantime, we pass them month to month so people don't just fall off the cliff and no service at all because some small percentage of population.
Yeah, the people who still depend on it, I don't want to take that away from them. I think you all understand, I just want to make it better. You know, like we said, to the Sportsplex, that'll be a big need, you know, maybe it's low-hanging fruit. Perhaps city staff could also, since we're opening avenues with Uber, see if they might share some data about how people move in our town. That may be proprietary, but it's worth the ask with Uber and Lyft. And Councilman Tabatabai?
Just to piggyback on what the mayor said, I do want to make a request that part of the action plan includes a permanent shuttle service, especially on those weekend tournaments, to shuttle teams and, you know, large numbers of people to the Sportsplex. So, you know.
With offsite parking, we need that.
Right, yeah, because that, like, I think that's going to be a non-negotiable, that we supply that. And then when we're, you know, communicating to all of these travel tournaments or whoever rents out, that this is our way of getting to and from the Sportsplex. This is the best way, the most convenient way, the best ways for your families and things like that. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Any further questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, then pursuant to all that comment, then I'll be open-minded. I'm okay with option number one, is that if my council agrees?
Month to month.
Month to month, option one.
Mayor, if I may? Option one, the pilot program will remain with MV Transit. Option two, the city will take on the MV Transit pilot program, or sorry, the Uber pilot program.
I would like to request option two. Thank you for that clarification. So I'll make a motion for option two, month to month, so we don't.
Sorry, quick question. The current pilot program is currently through the city right now?
No.
It's through MV?
We, yeah, the last amendment with the contract with MV Transit was for them to administer the program. We can also take it in-house and do that with staff.
Why would we have our staff do that if they're currently doing that? And this doesn't impact.
Sorry, they're not currently doing it. They were contracted to do it. We haven't launched the program.
So that $50,000 would not get diluted?
I'm sorry?
That $50,000 would not get diluted, meaning?
Got it.
There would be no administrative costs needed to pay out.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for option two.
Second?
I have a motion by Mayor Costellanos for option number two, for item number 10, and a second by Councilmember Tabatabai. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Thank you all. Option number two passes 5-0. So we'll be working on that as we move month to month on it. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. Do I have any council member reports, requests, or comments? Councilman Wu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, just want to mention again, March 12, March 13, West Covina Spring Festival and Fair. You have basically a 40, 50 performance, and you have 150 vendors with 90 of a service give you a lot of free gift and 60 few, and 10 the food truck, including the lobster truck, okay? So if you want to spend top dollars, go to the lobster truck, okay? So maybe the council want to buy somebody lobster truck, okay, lobster sandwich? So if somebody don't like the seafood. And then we have, okay, five bands, okay, and then, okay, they are very, okay, good player. Hopefully, they can provide a good entertainment, okay? And then we have 14 ride, okay, from the carnival, okay? Then we have, okay, and what kind of candy, candy, okay, snow candy, something? Okay?
Cotton candy.
Cotton candies, and thank you so much. My, it's too late, my brain doesn't function right now, okay? Cotton candy, I want the older one, okay? It's like my childhood dream, I want a pink one, okay? And then they have all this, okay, and entertainment for people to enjoy it, okay? And then we have a two-beer garden, okay? And so we can go over there to enjoy all different kind of beer, okay? I think this is magnificent, the first time in San Gabriel Valley. We have such a big, like, San Gabriel, okay, and West Covina Fair and Spring Festival, okay? I think this is something for our city with seven different group, including Kiwanis, okay, club, okay? And we have a lot of children want to perform. I think this is something, put the people together. You know, the pandemic is divided people, and hopefully, this, okay, and event can put people together for all the children to perform and appreciate each other, okay? Even we have a different culture, a different, okay, and appearance, but we're all brother and sister, okay? We want people to enjoy it, and I want the children to really feel confidence and happy for their future. And again, invite everybody, okay, to show up, okay? And if you see me, okay, catch me, I might buy you a lobster sandwich. Okay, thank you so much.
Councilman Tabatabai?
Thank you, yes, spring event, I will be there and I will be spending money. And I just wanted to also throw out, thank you to Walmarado Pony Baseball that had us for their opening day. Mayor Protem Diaz and Councilman Wu and I, we all got to throw out a first pitch. We all did a great job, I might have to say. So great time. The other thing, baseball is locked out, but there is plenty of baseball, I think, this weekend. West Covina All-American Little League is opening up. West Covina softball is opening up this weekend. Obviously, pony baseball is going strong. So our kids are back playing sports and enjoying. And so go out this weekend, because the Spring Fest is the following weekend, but go out this weekend to enjoy some baseball, some softball, buy food at the snack bars, the leagues need us to also buy those foods. So hopefully, I see some of you out there. Thank you.
All right, any more comments or requests? No? All right, well, this concludes our meeting. I'd like to adjourn in, well, honor of Ukraine. I'd like to keep them in my thoughts and prayers and hope that the situation gets better for them. I'm adjourned.